All of our productions at GCTV are sponsored in part by Bay State Health, providing the care you and your family need when you need it, close to home. Visit them online at baystatehealth.org. Greenfield Savings Bank, visit them at 400 Main Street in Greenfield. Call them at 774-3191, or go online to greenfieldsavings.com. Greenfield Community College, providing access and excellence in higher education in the Pioneer Valley. Visit them at gcc.mass.edu. The Hammond Family, the Hammond Family are longtime supporters of Greenfield Community Television. New Fortune Chinese Restaurant on the Mohawk Trail in Greenfield. Visit them online at newfortunema.com, call them at 772-0838, and check them out on Facebook. Real Cleaning Services, cleaning Hampshire and Franklin County since 1972. We don't cut corners, we clean them. Check them out online at realclean.com, call them at 413-422-1143. Peoples United Bank, located at 45 Federal Street in Greenfield. You can call them at 774-3713, or visit them online at peoples.com. The Solar Store of Greenfield, replacing fossil fuels and nuclear power one home at a time. Visit them at 23 Fisk Ave., call them at 413-772-3122, or visit them online at solarstoreofgreenfield.com. Thank you to our sponsors for supporting all of GCTV's productions.
It is 6:05 on Thursday, March 7th, 2019. We are at the John Zahn Center at 35 Pleasant Street here in Greenfield, Massachusetts. We are here for a special meeting of the school committee for the Greenfield Public Schools. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mayor Martin?
Here.
Mayor Martin?
Here.
Member Collins?
Here.
Member Nunes?
Here.
Member Karen?
Here.
Member Alexander?
Here.
Member Ward?
Here.
And Michael Suss.
All right, looks like we have a forum, thank you very much. As I mentioned, we're here for a special meeting, in particular to vote on the FY '20 budget. There is a little deliberation to be had before the vote. As well, we have time for public comment today. Can I get a show of hands from folks in the audience that are here to make a comment? Okay, great, super, thank you, Susan. If you haven't already checked in with Susan Firebird, our fantastic secretary, please do so. She will record your name, et cetera, for the record. The way that public comment works is you come down here to the hot seat and make sure to engage the microphone. Just press the button that says "push." When the green light's on, it is active. Please state your name and your address for the record. And you will have three minutes to speak to us about what you'd like to speak to us about. Our secretary, Ekstrom, will be running a timer for three minutes to ensure that everyone has an equal amount of time. Who's first on the list, Susan?
Crystal Zimmer.
Follow-up question.
Okay, and then as she's walking up here, just so you know, public comment is a time for us to hear from you. In most instances, we won't say anything necessarily back to you. Occasionally, there may be a need for a follow-up question, but it's very rare. So our ears are open, we're here to listen and hear your input. So whenever you're ready.
Do you need my address and stuff?
If you're reading the address.
Oh, okay. Crystal Zimmer, 10 and 1/2 Stanley Street in Greenfield. Good evening, tonight I am speaking as a parent of two students at Four Corners. At the last meeting, I learned of a request for an additional 4th grade teacher at the Discovery School that had not been included in the budget. And as I understand, there's an agreement that another 4th grade class does need to be open. So ideas have been thrown around about how to do this. One option was to cap the kindergarten at Four Corners to move teachers around to provide an additional 4th grade teacher. First of all, by restricting the kindergarten to only two classes, it increases class sizes for this group, which is one of the most important times for kids to have smaller class sizes. It also decreases the school choice funding that the Discovery School provides. In the last meeting, it was stated that students who school choice in tend to stay in. That is 12 years of school choice money being cut from every seat that we restrict from the Discovery School. This is another situation of trying to put a Band-Aid on a problem that will only cause future problems. Another suggestion floating around has been to open up Four Rivers as another K through 4 and redistrict to help spread the needs a little bit more evenly throughout the district. This kind of change likely wouldn't be in this budget, but it's a very important idea to consider for the following year as we continue to see our populations and needs increase every year. The reason that I bring this up is that by capping the kindergarten, we're reducing money coming in and kicking the expansion can down the road, so to speak. We need to realize that we're a city with educational needs of a city. We're not a small town anymore. We need to support the growing populations as best we can in our current settings and use this next year to plan for more permanent and sustainable options. If you cut the seats now, it will create future budget, space, and staffing issues. By providing funding for a single teacher, it will create a more stable foundation for the future expansion and redistricting that we desperately need. Continuing to consider this plan of restriction and growth versus growth sends a bad message to the public. We need to show growth and flexibility and the ability to provide for the changing needs of our city's youth. So I urge you to please consider the long-term consequences to the short-term solutions and include funding for an additional 4th grade teacher at Four Corners. As a side note, I would also like to push to find a way to keep the early care programs at the schools as they really meet the needs of many of the families in the district. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Pete Brown, over at 24 James Street here in Greenfield. About 10 years ago, when we moved to Greenfield, we heard all sorts of terrible stories about Greenfield Public Schools. And a few years later, when it was time to figure out where our kids were going to go to school, we sent them out of the district to a school that was creative and innovative and blah, blah, blah. That turned out to be a bad decision. About a year later, we decided to look at Greenfield Public Schools again. That was about four years ago, and it's been a great experience. I will tell you what has not been a great experience, and that is watching our teachers and our administrators and our superintendent come to this committee and to the town council, year after year, to beg and scrape and plead for a budget that is barely level-funded from one year to the next. These are great people in our district. We have great teachers, we have great administrators, we have great staff. Normally, I try to keep these comments constructive because I don't think coming and yelling at people is a great way to affect change. But it's been a long week at work, between this and a couple other issues in town right now. I'll be honest, I'm pissed off. We should be hearing from this committee about how we grow this district and how we recruit more great teachers, and how we add extracurriculars, and how we expand academics, and how we welcome more kids into our schools. Instead, we're sitting here talking about cutting early care, cutting bus routes, capping kindergarten enrollment. This is crazy. I get that this stuff costs money, I'm not stupid. But I've heard Mayor Martin say on any number of occasions that the role of town government is to find and provide opportunities for growth. And I would suggest that there is no better opportunity for growth in this town than investing in our public schools. Give these teachers and this district the tools and the budget they need to do the job and get the hell out of their way. Thank you.
Your kin.
Is that better? There you go.
We appreciate all the support that the school committee gives us throughout the year. We're here to support the school committee and the difficult decisions you've made. We know the school committee understands that a high proportion of the Greenfield students live in households with incomes below or near poverty levels, and consequently, the students come to school with more behavioral and mental stress issues related to poverty and trauma. We hope the committee also understands that in order to properly serve and educate these students, we need to maintain and reduce class sizes. We know the school committee understands the paraeducators and the instructional assistants play a key role in the classrooms and in the students' lives. We hope this committee understands there's not enough paraeducators, and their turnover rate is far above other districts in Western Massachusetts because their pay is lower than just about any other district in the state. And their starting wage for these positions is below state minimum wage. You cannot recruit and retain quality educators unless you pay them a living wage. We know the school committee understands that the high and growing proportion of special education students, English language learners, high-need and economically disadvantaged students means our specialists, psychologists, social workers, counselors, behaviorists, and nurses are facing growing caseloads of children who come to school with trauma. We hope the committee understands that specialists are facing burnout due to this unsustainable caseload that they're dealing with every day. We know the school committee understands the Greenfield's overall student enrollment has been and is continuing to increase. We hope the committee understands more student means that we need more teachers, more para-professionals, more specialists, and this requires a bigger budget. We know the school committee understands that the teachers who are here serving our children are dedicated. They're professionals. We hope the school committee understands that choosing a school district to serve is a huge commitment to our professional lives and that continuing reliance on spending down reserves, revolving funds, and one-time funding sources leads to being not sustainable. Fiscal cliffs, funding shortfalls, budget Band-Aids, these mean uncertainty. You cannot attract and retain dedicated, quality teaching professionals in an uncertain environment. Greenfield Schools needs a sustainable budget that everyone, students, parents, and educators can rely upon. The state is finally recognizing that it has not been doing its part, funding us needing to educate our students. And the governor and legislature and our union are currently working to rectify that. Recent talk of the city trying to siphon off the projected increases in state education funding away our students and schools is sight...
You're at three minutes now, if you could wrap up.
Short-sighted and wrong.
Thank you.
Among...may I finish one last paragraph?
Quickly.
Among area districts, Greenfield provides one of the lowest net school spending. Greenfield's actual net school spending as a percentage of the foundation budget is currently in the bottom third of the state. Let's not race to the bottom, our children deserve better than that.
Thank you. Can you turn your chime on so that people can hear it? Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Matthew Barrett. I reside at 38 Congress Street in Greenfield, Mass...uh, Greenfield. And I am the father of two students at Federal Street. I'm also a PTO member, but I'm not here to speak for the PTO tonight. But we did recently find out that there was a little bit of disparity between the three elementary schools with, as far as a part-time librarian being at Four Corners, whereas at Newton and Federal Street, that there is no funding for that. And I would hope to address that with you and hope that you can find some money in the budget to address this disparity and make things a little more even throughout the school districts. I think probably the test scores can probably show how a librarian can probably help at the schools, and I hope that this can be addressed in this budget. I know it's a little bit late to the game here, but we just found...I just found out about it last night, so... But I just wanted to thank you for your time, and have a good evening.
Thank you.
Joe Regeri, Berniston Road. I came here to ask you to support some of these budget cuts, and I think few people said it really well before this. In some ways, I sit here feeling guilty because I want other things that this town is budgeting for. And I think if there was plenty of money, you guys would support everything. So obviously, there's tough decisions to be made. My thought in terms of spending has a lot to do with income. I think if I can make more money, I can spend more money. And opening up kindergarten and getting more folks into our district, that to me is a real good income source. And so that's where I'm really motivated by my actions of coming here tonight. So I think it's obviously tough every year. We have a certain amount of money coming in, we don't want to go up on our taxes. But I'm quite happy with the taxes that I'm paying, and I hope you guys can allocate the funds accordingly. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Sarah O'Hern Bellmer, 78 Riddell Street. And this is my least favorite thing to do, so I'll keep this short and sweet. I think Pete Brown said some really great points, and I'd like to second those. I sit here as a parent of a Discovery School student who will be in 4th grade next year. And it's really clear that we need another 4th grade teacher at the Discovery School. I'm also...my daughter Lucy will be in kindergarten next year, and I hope that there will be three kindergartens for her to be a part of at Four Corners. I am a graduate of Four Corners and love that I am back here in this town and have my two girls at Four Corners. It's a really special place that needs our support, as I should say, all of the schools in town. But it's really crazy to think that we would not give the schools what they need. So please, support our schools and the staff and students, and that's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Michael Sustick, I live at 8 Ark Street in Leeds. I'm a teacher at Four Corners School, kindergarten teacher. It's been seven or eight years now. I see a lot of families that I've had children and have...I'm glad to hear from all of them, and I'd like to echo a lot of their sentiments. My classroom has, just by its geography, right across the hallway is what we call the ready room. It's a wonderful space, staffed by a wonderful staff member who helps children that are...you know, sometimes it's just as small as they need a little quiet space to finish a test or some schoolwork. Other times, it's something larger. I know the people I work with, how dedicated and how hard they work, how flexible they are with students. And yet, we still have an extremely high amount of students that are dealing with trauma in their lives. And I see every day them coming down, the anger, the physical violence, the verbal abuse that we all take on a daily basis from some of these students by no fault of our or their own. It's the trauma that they have to deal with and that we're trying to help them with. And I'm concerned that if we only have two kindergartens next year, I look at the three kindergartens we have this year. If they were in two classes, how difficult that would have been for us as a building to continue educating the children to the best of our ability. And I look at Orange as a...Orange Town Schools as an example of... Last year, they went this route, cut a kindergarten class, ended up with two. And you know, they've been in a lot of hot water recently because of that. So I would urge that we continue to have three kindergartens at the Four Corners School. I would urge that we continue having the bus routes that serve the most needy students in Greenfield because it's just important to get them to school. And it's hard enough with all the things that their families face in their life without having to be concerned about transportation as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Many of you know that I'm the principal of the high school, but I'm also a taxpayer. Karen Patnott, 17 Mary Potter Lane. I used to reside in Northfield and could have easily remained there. But as an educator in Greenfield, I not only wanted my tax dollars to go to the community I serve, but I also wanted to be an active member of the community in which my students and their families live. As an educator for over 20 years, I have seen the needs of public school students drastically change, yet continually grow. Yes, we educate them, but we also fulfill so many other needs. We provide two meals daily, we offer clothing resources, we support mental health needs, to name just a few. The Greenfield Public Schools deserve your budgetary support to meet the needs of each and every student in each and every building in this district. You were elected, and I, along with the superintendent and other principals, work for them. Without our continual support and investment in our students' educational needs, the Greenfield educational system cannot thrive and grow. I feel it is my duty as a principal and as a taxpayer to not allow students' needs to go unrecognized, and that is why I address you tonight. They deserve, and quite frankly, should expect, our continual investment in their education so that we can provide them with an academic, social, and emotional supports that they need. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, seeing no one else that would like to comment, we will move on to the next agenda item, the FY '20 budget vote. So we are looking for a final vote tonight, everybody. And what we're doing tonight is essentially voting a bottom line. I want to remind the committee that there are two additional phases. Well, really, kind of three phases. The budget will go to the mayor, and then the council, and then eventually bounce back to us. If there are any needed changes to be made at that time, we will make changes at that time. I also want to kind of caution us against micromanaging. Again, we're looking at a bottom line, and there's much more to come in this conversation. I also want to remind us that, you know, at the building level, our principals have authority over their staffing decisions. So I just kind of want to remind us of that, that is the law. All right, so I do want to jump right in with the superintendent and/or Steve. If you'd like to make any comments on any changes that may have occurred between the last time that we met as a full body, about two weeks ago. And then before we begin any additional deliberation, I think that we should start with a motion. Superintendent.
I'd like to ask our business manager just to walk you through the handout that's in front of you. Some of this information was contained in our last full committee meeting. All of it has been reviewed by the Budget and Finance Subcommittee, which they've had for 48 hours or more. And I would like to spend a few moments going through this in a summary way. Those of you in the audience, we have several copies available, but we apologize there aren't enough for as many people in the room. It's great to have a good turnout. These are all also posted online. All of our meeting materials are on our website. If you're watching at home, go to gpsK12.org, click on "School Committee." All the materials are there under "Tonight's Meeting Materials." Thank you.
Okay, I'll jump into this. And first of all, the first page here has a few slides and a graph or a chart at the bottom. First starts with the superintendent's budget of $19,973.47, which is $1.3 million more than the last year's budget of $18,575. And this...all these pages try to get to the point of how did we get there? And what makes up that 19.9 number? Last year, $2.8 million in revolving accounts was used to offset the operations of the school district. Consistent with policy, as well as a realistic look at the fiscal cliff that that creates. So basically, you're using one-time savings to continue operations of the school district. $2 million is being used this year out of the revolving accounts. That immediately creates an $800,000 gap. Add to that about $500,000 in tractable costs, of which $300,000 is step raises, things like that. One interesting piece to the step raise point is that if you look at the distribution of teachers, as well as paras within the district, 75% of your employees are on step, and only 25% are at the top step. I've worked in a number of districts throughout the state. Usually, that number is around 60% to 70% at the top step. What does that mean? Is that your training ground for teachers. Teachers are coming, very young, and they're starting at the step, and they're not staying to finish their career here. They're leaving before they reach the top step. This creates an inherent problem within the budgetary cycle because every single...75% of your teaching staff is getting around a 4% to 4.5% step raise within the budget. Every single para is getting...75% of the paras are getting around a 3.5% step raise within the budget. So that creates that $300,000 to $400,000 in intractable costs that go towards that number. So you add the $800,000 in reduced funding from revolving accounts, then you add in the $500,000 in intractable costs, and you get to about your $1.3 million number. Step...Slide four in this are revolving usage. There was some discussion last time regarding the beginning balances of the revolving funds. The mayor was correct, some were off. I conferred with the city finance director, as well as myself, realized that we're pulling...that I was pulling from a different cell group, creating a difference in the beginning balances. So these here are correct, and these show that essentially, we had in FY '19, $2.8 million in estimated expenses, and FY '20, around $2 million in estimated expenses. And as you can tell, as you go forward, as you reduce that amount of usage as you go forward, you'll see that you're going to run out of money at some point. Maybe not next year, maybe the year after, the year after. So it's something to think about and something that's cognizant within this budget, which creates that $1.3 million figure. If you go to the next page, what you'll see are additions to the budget. There are not any additions that are out of this world. Some additions consider sped teachers, BCBAs, SLPAs, those types of stuff. So they are in the budget right now. What is not in the budget are several positions that were requested. And if you look at number F, it says total dollar, and that should read $1,113,761 as the total dollar of requests. Of that total dollar of requests, only about $350,000 has been granted within this budget because frankly, you can't have everything. Some of the decreases to the budget for paras, before-school care, two buses, tuitions at AEL, and offset the food service, as well as some in-house sped busing. We are being very aggressive with in-house sped busing. Currently, the cost of transporting one student from Greenfield to Holyoke is about $48,000 a year. We can do that cheaper, and we are going to do that cheaper. And there is a significant savings to be had within that group. It will require some out-of-the-box thinking. It will require some flexibility within the salary scale to attract drivers. But it can be done, and we are going to do it. Some of the things not funded in this budget are the 4th grade teacher, as well as an allowance for increases next year in contracts. So what that means is that within this budget, FY '19, the folks are put into the budget based upon the 19 teacher scale. FY '20, we'll have a new teacher scale, and then in FY '21... FY '20, we'll have a new teacher scale, and then in FY '21, we'll have another new teacher scale. Because we're budgeting at the FY '19 rate, a master step 11 teacher is being budgeted at the master step, master step 11, 19 rate. In 2021, there'll be a master step 12. So what that creates is an increase. And because the city funds contractual increases through an outside source, the outside revenues or outside appropriation, what happens is, is that there's a big gap between the two. So in the FY '21 budget, you'll see this one teacher at step 11 going to step 12, and FY '21 at a $10,000 increase. If you want to combine that with using all of the revolving funds and having to make that up, FY '21 will be a very, very, very difficult year. So that needs to be thought about wisely going forward. School choice, we receive about $599, send out about $2.8 million. And within that slide, you'll see where all those kids go and where they come from. Charter, $1.1 million. And with the Four Rivers being the largest recipient of charter students from Greenfield. Slide number 12 is basically class sizes. Class sizes aren't small, and they aren't big. You'll see that their range, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, somewhere around there. Pretty standard class sizes. Per pupil expenditures, all fund. Greenfield's towards the bottom with per pupil costs. On it, all funds a total expenditure of $31 million for that. If you look on the next page, relative wealth in the area. Greenfield has one of the highest tax bases, as well as one of the highest total income levels in the area. Finally, need. Greenfield is one of the needier cities in the area with large economically disadvantaged population, as well as students with disabilities and high needs. Most notably is the high needs number at 55%. That's relatively high for us. Above foundation spending on the next page. Greenfield is, as a percentage of foundation, so that means as a percentage of what is required to be spent by the state, Greenfield is among the lowest with 14.4% above the foundation. All the cities and towns in the area spend above foundation, as well as Greenfield, rightfully so. The next slide is just basically cost centers. The next one is just a summary of what the budget looks like in major function areas. Comparison of general and sped expenses. Now, slide number 18 is telling in that most, all of our expenses, over 80%, are salaries. So very few dollars are spent on non-salary items. Almost everything is spent with people. So when you're talking about cutting upwards of 5, 6, 7, 800,000, you're going to get into people. There's just no way around it. Cost classifications. As you can see, instruction and support are the two highest costs for the district. That means that most all of the spending in this district goes towards classroom, classroom education, and children. $288,000 is earmarked for new positions. Those were the ones on page two, which is roughly about a point, a .45 of the total budget. And again, you'll see salaries as the largest major expense within this budget. Supplemental appropriations. Over the years, there's been supplemental appropriations for contract stabilization, as well as added district tuition. Added district tuition remains one of the sticky subjects going forward. And frankly, it's one of those things where it's difficult to budget for. People move in the district, they move out of the district. Some move in with IEPs, others move in and quickly realize that they need to be in a placement. So this is a moving target every year. And in the past, the school department has gone to the city to ask for additional funds for added district tuition. The next piece is just a summary of the local appropriation, some estimated city costs. So it kind of gives you a sense of what the total budget is, not only on the school side, but on the city side. And then finally, the level service budget detail. 19.1 would be a level service budget. However, that includes a full use of revolving funds. Again, revolving funds in the amount of $2.8 million is the sticky wicket here. It's one of the things that needs to be solved going forward, and that 800,000 seems to be a number that's popped up in the past and has created some difficulty. So it is one thing that either needs to be solved or partially solved this year going forward. And in light of all the other needs, it's a difficult situation. Finally, with the addition of a substantial amount of Chapter 70 funds of about $1.1 million, this is an opportune time to go ahead and tackle that problem so it doesn't become a long-range problem and fairly catastrophic in FY '21. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Steve. Superintendent, did you want to add anything to that? Okay. Are there any clarifying questions for Steve at this time? I have one. How is the ELT grant money reflected in the documents that we have?
The ELT grant is a standalone grant, so it's not particularly reflected here. What it is, it's paid for for the extended time, and it's handled through the Grants Department.
Thank you. Member Ward, as chairperson of the Budget Subcommittee, would you like to comment on any recommendations or any significant points from deliberation, et cetera?
Not really. We don't have a recommendation to bring to the full committee. I, we tried to come with, to come with one today, and we don't. And while I can appreciate the public's view, you know, I've got kids in the school system too. And there's a balance, and it's very difficult. And, you know, we're trying to do what's best for the children and the entire community. So I can respect what Steve is saying, and revolving funds is something that we have discussed. We didn't come to a consensus to stay away from using those. But we certainly didn't have, there was, there was some discussion about a number from revolving funds that we would be comfortable with, and we weren't able to come to one. So we don't, we don't have a recommendation.
Thank you, Member Ward. Okay, so to start off deliberation, let's have a motion. I think we can start with a motion to approve the FY '20 budget with the total local budget of 19.9, I'm sorry, $19,970,347. Okay, so I guess that's moved by me. I seconded by Member Exrem. It's totally fine. I said it in a weird way. So I guess I'll just speak to my motion quickly. I am actually interested in potentially adding on to this budget line to include the two bus routes that are proposed to be cut. I'm interested in providing the bus services for our students in some way or another. I am open to paying for that out of some various revolving accounts or just adding it into our overall bottom line. As well, I think that we need to find a solution to our early morning care. And I think that, you know, I read a headline, I believe Gil Montague is adding in some early morning care. And really, there's a need. There's a need in our overall community. There's a need in the region. And I think that it's important for us to respond to that need and help to fill it. I think that there are some options here for some sliding scale fees to help to either offset the cost or fully pay for the services. In addition, I also would support filling the four corners, fourth grade teacher position in order to keep three kindergartens at the school. Again, this is really in the spirit of, you know, keeping our doors open and really investing in our schools. And I think that with that particular position, it could be funded through, again, through some of our revolving accounts. I understand that our current revolving account policy places limitations on, say, our school choice role, carryforward values. And so it may mean that we need to vote on this in the future when the superintendent has a set plan for the spending. I really have come to this budget with, you know, the viewpoint of we need to be continuing to invest in our schools. And when I look at the work that we've done over the years, I'm very, very proud of the work that we've done in building our budget. We aren't where we were 10 years ago. We should be proud of where we are. We're paying competitive salaries for our teachers. There's additional work to be done in other, with other salaries. But, you know, I think that we need to continue to be investing in our schools and in our students. And that's where I stand at this time. Any comments from this side, or did you want to speak to your second?
In truth, I actually agree with what Adrian says. And I said this at our last meeting, is that I wish this budget was actually larger to include those things that had been disincluded, I should say, rather than cut. And as I was at the Subcommittee meeting today and was also allowed to comment, saying I think it should be larger than that still. I think that, but the overarching issue is, so where does the money come from? And that's my only, those are my comments.
Member Hollins.
At our Budget Subcommittee today, Mayor Martin asked where the decision was made to eliminate a kindergarten, to cut two buses, to eliminate early care. And I just want to say that that wasn't a proposal that came from the Budget Subcommittee. We learned about it when it was announced. Having, being on the Budget Subcommittee, what's clear to me, using Steve's description, baked in the pie, we have $500,000 of intractable costs. About $300,000 of that are automatic salary increases. About $90,000 is the new transportation, and the rest is special ed tuitions out of districts. So there's $500,000 that I believe we have to add because, without any other changes. And the administration has mentioned another $800,000 to come to, if I understand it right, the number they're recommending. And at one of our Subcommittee meetings, we did look at one of the revolving funds, and we took a vote to recommend an additional $200,000 from the Choice Fund that would leave $600,000 of the $800,000. It's been in the paper that Greenfield, fortunately, is receiving another $1 million, maybe more than that. We don't know. I don't know. The state budget hasn't been set for education. And part of our discussions at Subcommittee is that the education costs for Greenfield are not only in this budget. There's, I forget how many million on the city side of students. There are just a lot of education costs in the budget that's not here. So in my mind, at least what we've talked about is it'd be great to think every cent that's coming into Greenfield, the treasury of Greenfield for education, would only come to the school side, except our health insurance for teachers is paid on the city side. And that's, the mayor's identified, you know, I forgot the number exactly. $100,000, sorry, $218,000 increase that the city has to pay for increased health costs for teachers, and $157,000 for retirement of teachers. So in my mind, we didn't, we didn't come to a conclusion, but in my mind, the million dollars, they're costs on both sides. So I came up with a simple idea that we should, and let me say, the money that comes in from Chapter 70 doesn't address the tax rate. So if we could have some of that applied to our budget, that doesn't, the budget goes up. We get better stability for the future, but we're not raising taxes. So in my mind, we should do a split. I know others may not agree, but we should grab another $600,000 or $700,000 of that and allow the city to get some of that money to address their costs. So I figured out that we should add the $500,000, which are intractable, and $660,000 of new state aid. It keeps our increase under 3%. And with the $200,000 from school choice, it gets us to the numbers that's here. As the chairperson said, we don't micromanage and say, you know, this teacher's being hired and this one isn't. But personally, as someone who was a single parent, I think the before-school, it's, I don't know if you call it care, but the ability to get to your job and make sure your children are safe places is critical. I think we shouldn't do anything in terms of reducing costs that encourages somebody to go to another district. And I've always supported a strong elective program at our high school. So those are my thoughts. I think we can get the, get the amount the superintendent's asking for. What I mentioned at our meeting today is the discussions of our budget will keep going through June because what we're going to do is eventually vote a number that we give to the mayor, and then the mayor has to create a budget, and then that budget goes to the City Council, and then, I mean, it just keeps going. So we still have three months to talk about some of the details of what's in and out, but that's my thought.
Member Karen.
I just would like to ask a clarifying question because I got a lot of numbers there, and I'm not sure where you ended up. So you're suggesting that the budget number will stay the same?
Actually, I thought it, since we were agreeing, our committee did have a unanimous vote to use. Besides what we recommend in our policy on each of these revolving funds in order to keep stability, we recommended an additional $200,000 from Choice. So what I came to with the intractable costs plus 600 and or so from increasing, considering the new state aid, I came up $200,000 under. That's not to say I couldn't support more, but $200,000 under the superintendent's budget because of using $200,000 more in school choice, which would be $19,773.47.
So you're suggesting that in that amount, the superintendent could find the money to fund early care and?
Well, you know, there's a lot of different ways to do things. One of the things I noticed, I mean, it's never popular to talk about you could do it this way, you could do it that way, but there's a lot of different ways to do things. This is the proposal that's here.
Member Hollins, one second. Did you say, did you want to repeat your question?
I just want, so you think that if we give this budget, that there's space, without telling me how she would do it or where it would come from, to give all of the things back that Member Nunez suggested?
to give all of the things back that Member Nunez suggested in that current budget? Or no? Hoping for a yes or no.
I don't know how to answer that because some people would say, we have to put this in, we shouldn't do this, we should do that. So I would do it differently, but that's just me. For example, in one of the charts we received at the budget presentation, I mentioned this today at the Budget Subcommittee meeting, this chart per pupil spending comparison, I looked at administration. I have nothing against administration, but it did, when I looked at it, I noticed that the spending for administration in Greenfield.
So I just, I think Member Karen's looking for kind of a concise yes or no.
You're thinking she'll still have to make some of these cuts, we're suggesting, yes.
I think we can keep the bus routes and early care, yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Did you, Member Karen have more to say?
Well, and then you said something about you thought that we should give some of the 1.1 million to the state, to the town. How would that affect our budget?
It doesn't come to the schools, it's revenue that goes to the city. It doesn't come to us like a grant for the school district. This is extra revenue that goes in the city coffers.
So you think they should give us how much then?
I thought they, we should get 60% of it.
But the, correct me if I'm wrong, Steve, the 1.1 million has been added to our current budget already? Or considered? So that would be a 40% reduction of that, which is approximately $400,000 to our budget. But then you added the 200,000 back in from revolving funds to get to that 19,7 number?
Did you have any additional comments or anything?
I'm, sure, I, I agree with Adrienne. I think that we should take the original number and take and add back approximately 85,000, in my mind, for the early care and the teacher position at Four Corners because losing a kindergarten affects our school choice budget. And I actually am, I don't know, and I would take Steve's recommendation, perhaps the 200,000 from revolving funds is not a ridiculous number to maybe help with those bus routes. But I, I believe we should have healthy, robust revolving funds because at some point, this year we got 1.1 million. That doesn't mean we're going to get it next year. It doesn't mean we're going to get it ever again. And I don't want to take a risk at affecting our students, so. I think the budget should be way more, but I also am a taxpayer, to be clear. And I would always love paying taxes. Honestly, I'm not just saying that sarcastically. I have not once complained about paying taxes and I will always continue to just pay them. I like roads, I like teachers, I like firemen, pay them. Yes. But it has been baked into this number. So if we only take 60%, we're reducing this number. Great, thank you.
Thank you, Member Karen. Would anyone else like to comment? Mayor Martin.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to start with the, the Chapter 70 discussion. The Chapter 70, and as Steve has mentioned, doesn't go down. So once it reaches a number, it stays there. It is delivered to the city and it's for educational expenses. So there are a number of millions and millions of dollars of educational expenses. Besides the proposed 19,970,000, there's another roughly 13 or 14 million that the town pays in addition to that. So it's, the point I want to make is that the funds would be used only for educational services. If you, if you view it from the one side, it's, the Chapter 70 funds would be shared, the new funds would be shared and go to educational expenses that are incurred even in this budget, new to the city of Greenfield. If you look from the other side, it's possible that the entire Chapter 70 funds are given to the school. But the other invoices and bills still have to be paid. So it would result in a reduced contribution from the city, which is, it's, the saying is six of one, half dozen of the other. The, if we go to the first page, Steve, we're talking about revolving funds. If we go to slide number four and the, the purpose of withholding the 880, 808 or 860,000 of revolving funds into the FY '20 budget, which are in the FY '19 budget, was to build up a sum of money for next year. Right, but we have, we do, okay, the policy can be reviewed and amended by the school committee. So let's, let's just assume that the policy was reviewed and amended. You start off with the beginning balance FY '19 of roughly, I'll just use the first couple digits, 3.3 million. And you end up at the end of FY '19, after the grant monies come in, to 2.4 million. And then you start the following year, that would be June 30th of 2020, with 2.4 million. And then you receive the grants again for the year and you apply funds for the FY '20 budget. And in June 30th FY, I'm sorry, June 30th of 2021, you have 2.47 million. So you've actually increased by about $30,000 the balance at the end of the year from June 30th 2020 to June 30th 2021. So we haven't, we haven't risked anything because we've spent, in many cases, in some of these grants, you have to spend the money within the 12-month period. So we've really stabilized the revolving funds, coming up with the same number, 2.4 million, one year to the next. That doesn't include the food service amount, which maintains a pretty good revenue of 1.1, 1.2 million every year. And you end up with 513 at the end of FY '20, which is June 30th 2020, and 613 in June 30th of 2021. So for the next 24 months, we look like we're, we're pretty stable.
That was the point, to stabilize it, yes.
And so I think that's done. Now, I, I don't agree with the beginning balances. I think the beginning balances are off a bit. So if we started with, for instance, your choice, or say, circuit breaker, with a balance of 1,017,000. So the rule with circuit breaker, it can only be used in a certain way. And, as you know, and the amount of money that you received in the previous year has to be spent. So in one year, we received, it's not shown here, but in one year, we received 911,000 and the other year, we received 960,000. So I don't know how we could end up with over a million.
No, it's, this is just a projection. And the, the, the point of this is, is that we don't know, we don't even know what our FY '19 circuit breaker will be for this year. And you're right, that, that beginning balance should equal to what the revenues were on the previous year, but we do not know what those revenues are. So what we're going to need to do is just keep that placeholder and rather than hide money, to be transparent, show you what it is. And then what we'll do is, as a group, and as we've done in the past, is to decide how to use any of that surplus, whether it's returned to the city or used on some other projects or anything like that.
So historically, there hasn't been anything returned to the city in several, several years.
I've only been here seven months.
Right. So with the beginning balances and the difference, I've come up with somewhere between 300,000 and 400,000 difference in the beginning balances. And we can get into the details at, at any time, but we're voting tonight so that the people know that there, there's a different starting point for my calculations and, and the proposed budget. With the, with the grants, I also have different balances. The IDEA grant, it shows, I think, 482.5, 482,500. And I show a balance of 575,000.
Okay, are, I, are you looking at this with the charts?
I'm looking at this that you gave to us.
Oh, yeah, only, I have it somewhere, but only you and I have the benefit of that and two other people.
Okay.
So.
So is it on the chart and your revolving, or do you have the grants here?
No, there are no grants shown.
Okay, so the grant differentiation is about, only about $240,000 difference in between the Title I, Title II A, and early childhood grant. So the difference in the beginning balance and the ending balance. The, for instance, the, the one, another transfer that the school has with the town is Medicare reimbursement. So it's a federal law, so that if you have certain expenses in a grant, the money is paid for fringe benefits from the grant to the city. One of those is Medicare reimbursement, as you know. So are the grant, current grants paying the Medicare reimbursement and health insurance?
Okay, two, two very different things. Medicare reimbursement is money that we apply for. The school provides all the services, the schools do all the work. We, I, actually, when I first got here, I spent a considerable amount of time cleaning up that Medicaid reimbursement piece. And what had happened, what happens is that that money goes directly to the town. We pay a provider to go ahead and file our paperwork. Those fees are paid out to Medicaid. And I believe Medicaid reimbursement is on the order of 300 some odd thousand dollars, give or take. That goes directly to the city. And there was a DOR guidance about eight or nine years ago that required that money to go to the bottom line, then fall to free cash. As it, so that is strictly within the purview of the town. That is a revenue to you and you can really use it however you want to use it.
Right, I'm particularly talking about the Medicare reimbursement, which is when you have employees in the grants, and the health insurance reimbursement.
Oh, okay, so, so with that, you're talking about healthcare, health insurance, which grants do pay for. And I believe in the past, what the city and schools have come to an agreement on some sort of number to go ahead and reimburse for medical insurance for those folks. I'm not familiar with Medicaid, the 1.45% that each, each of us pay towards, towards the Medicaid plan? Is that what you're, you're talking about?
Medicare, yeah.
Okay, gotcha. And I'm assuming that it's in there, I, that I don't know.
Okay. Just to note that we, the city and the school have, have not agreed to other payment other than the actual cost of the health insurance.
Okay.
Even though it was, it was done that way in the past. The, and the contractual increases, you note roughly, I think Suzanne and yourself and I think Jordana had mentioned that it was roughly 500,000 in contractual. And your notes show that the contractual includes a 2% COLA.
Yes, the 2% COLA for non-bargaining unit employees, yes.
Right, so we have, we have the steps. And, and people understand that the steps each year, they're automatic, pay increases in between 3.5% and 6.5%. And then on top of that, we have a COLA. But we don't have a COLA, settled COLAs now. So it's a contract to be negotiated?
No, the, these are, are non-contractual employees. So everyone paid on an individual contract, not part of a union. So you're exactly right. Those in a union, we do not have a COLA or a contract for those. Other folks, such as myself, anyone on an individual contract, and in the past, have been budgeted for about a 2% COLA going forward in order to provide a raise at some point, or maybe no raise at some point, depending on performance.
So you've calculated the steps for the current employees? Do we have?
Yes, yeah, the current employees all have steps.
One second, I'm, I'm hearing.
To bring everyone sort of in on the conversation, can you say what a COLA means?
Cost of living adjustment.
Thank you.
Did you say you also have a clarifying question?
Yes, the mayor mentioned that the total city cost was 13 million approximately. I'm wondering where in that paperwork it says that because on my paperwork, I see total estimated city cost is 6.1 million approximately. So I'm just wondering where I'm missing that information.
Sure, if you, I don't know what, what you have for the 6.1 million.
It's, it's in here, Chart 23, it lists estimated city costs, retirement, active health insurance, health insurance, retirement, other insurance, and utilities.
It's on the very last page of today's packet.
So that's come, that comes under another title called Townside School Costs. And that total is, including, including the budget, is about 34 million.
Correct.
But excluding the budget, includes 2.8 million dollars for school choice sending that the city pays, charter school sending of 1.1 million dollars, regional school assessment, Frank County Tech School, 1.3 million dollars. And this is from FY '18, I don't have the FY '19 information. So that, and Smith College, I mean, sorry, Smith Volk. So we have, that's where that's mostly made up. Health insurance is 2.8 million. Workers' comp is 135,000. All of these different items are listed by, by line item under the Townside School Costs. So the total is, as of, is 32 million for FY '18, including the school budget at that time of 18.1 million.
Right, but I, the way we were talking about was, what I understood you were talking about was insurance increases and stuff like that, which is estimated here to be about 384,000.
That's an increase this year.
Correct, that's, yeah, thank you.
That's what you want, what's happening this year?
That, I mean, that's just what we have in front of us, is an estimated increase. So that's what I was wondering.
Right, but that doesn't include the increase for new employees and, and other type of changes the school may make.
Correct.
So I just, do you have a clarifying question for the mayor? The mayor does have the floor, if you have a clarifying question, then, okay, go ahead.
Don't let me manipulate the conversation, just if someone else has a question, just please.
Okay.
So when we're looking at this, and Steve is giving us the information and this says FY '18 school choice sending, when I'm looking at this and we're talking about a budget, if we're including that in the information given to us now, it seems to me that that would be the school side budget. But I think what I just heard you say is that that's part of the city budget. So which is it?
Right, the, it's the city budget. The, the 2.8 for the sending, to sending Choice out, the city pays for the, the bill, 2.8 million. And for the Choice in, the money and the revenue goes to the school department. So that's averaging somewhere between 580 and 750,000 a year as new revenue. Does that answer your question?
No, I mean, maybe there's a piece I'm missing. So what we, we have received that says the Greenfield Schools budget statistics, which in general, doesn't include anything on the city side with the exception of the 6.1 million at the back. And maybe it's just the way that the information is presented and I'm missing a piece here.
Yeah, I think the information is presented as all accurate mostly, but it's, it doesn't include everything.
So this is the city budget, even though we're looking at it within the overall, not overall, with just what the income and expenses are here. It's just, I'd say, two, really, it's placed.
The total estimated city cost of 6.1 million is not accurate.
Well, yes, I understand that as well. Well, yes, I understand that as well.
Okay.
At any rate.
So, so as a city, we do have a responsibility to pay for the choice-out funding, as well as to pay, as Mayor Martin noted, Franklin County Tech students, Smith vocational students. And it's not included in the chart on Page Eight. The chart on Page Eight is looking at the costs at the Greenfield Public Schools, what we're doing right here. And so, yes, those are true costs. However, the chart here on the back attempts to communicate directly to what's happening right here in our schools, with our students. Do you feel like that's an accurate summary of what's presented here?
It's, you know, you can't give all the information, because this thing would be a hundred pages long, but what it does is highlight some of the snapshot pieces that are important to consider going forward. And one of the important pieces to consider is that a tremendous number of students are choicing out. And that is a true cost. And no one has said anything different. We reap the benefit of the receiving money, and the city reaps the deficit. And that is absolutely accurate.
So I do have a clarifying question related to, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Superintendent.
So I just, I want to note that school finance is incredibly complex. Those of us that have been doing the work of the Budget and Finance Subcommittee have met for six months, plus or minus, sometimes twice as often as the other committees. Today alone, we met for three hours. Most of our meetings are two to three hours. We go through this in great detail. We talk about, in excruciating detail, every level of the budget, whether or not we add a kindergarten teacher, whether or not we add a bus route. Health and safety looked at our bus routes the other day, and the safety impact of eliminating buses. We talk about eliminating before school care. We look for finding coins between the couch cushions, if you will, in a budget that is extremely lean. That is why we look so closely, because these mostly are salaries, and they mostly are baked-in costs. But when you start talking about revenue, and accounts, and streams, it gets incredibly obtuse incredibly quickly. So what we've tried to do is make it as transparent and clear as possible. Unfortunately, I think it's a bit unfortunate that we're sitting here tonight, on the night of a vote, sort of wildly looking at numbers as low as 6 million, as high as 14 million on the city side, and without a clear understanding of what those indirect costs are, and how they're actually part of the total education budget. The Budget and Finance Subcommittee had a discussion about this earlier today, and I think the city has some true costs here, but we actually need to look at that as part of what is contributing to education in Greenfield. And if it's counting towards our net school spending, which translates into our per pupil costs in Greenfield, and that's the amount that people look at and say, you're spending too much, or you're spending too little, then why aren't we having a conversation about how much do we spend on insurance? How much do we spend on, how is the partnership? One of our effective partnerships, for example, is that we have a central maintenance department here in Greenfield, who work very closely with the maintenance staff in the Greenfield Public Schools. I think by all accounts, that's been an effective way of the town and the school partnering together. So we could be looking at, how has that generated some savings? And is there a way that that's returned to the town? Another good example is that the Energy Department recently partnered with the school. We have our facilities director here. We oversaw a program where we put in energy-saving equipment in every single school building in the district. And we heard from the Energy Director that that was probably a savings of $30,000 per year. Now, that is a savings that school staff and school employees in the school department budget worked on, but that savings is returned to the town. But when we look at these projected city-side costs, they actually go up in the energy line for next year. Utilities is expected to increase from 405,000 to 413,000 dollars next year. So I think it's unfortunate that despite the scrupulous looks at every kindergarten teacher in this district, that we're not actually having a comprehensive conversation about where all these costs are, and that if we're going to make cuts, and that if the people of Greenfield are going to experience the effects of where we invest or do not invest, that we should be having a very clear and robust conversation about all these aspects. I think it's fair. I think it makes us stronger as a community. I think it makes sure that we're accountable to the budget that the committee has set. And I think it means that we do a better job of bringing together all of our resources and being smart and creative, which is what we've heard time and time again, of we can't do everything, so let's be smart, let's have innovative ideas, and let's look at everything all together and collaborate. So I think that's really what we have an opportunity to do here. And I think we have a common solution, which is there's a revenue stream that's coming to Greenfield that's projected. We don't know what will happen with the education budget. Perhaps we'll get more than we're expecting. But we have an opportunity to make a value statement about what we want to see happen with the schools, and how we want to stand behind them, and how we want to build a budget process that articulates the priority of our students and the health of our community.
Do I still have the floor, Chair?
Yes, you do. And I'm seeing Member Holland's hand, but I...
So the, I wouldn't call these numbers wild. I would call them extremely accurate and filed. The cost for retiree health and life insurance of the school is 567,295 dollars. The cost for all insurances for active employees is 3.268 million and 104 dollars. There are, you know, the cost for central maintenance is 57,408 dollars. Anyone wants to go through each purchase order and each job order, they're welcome to go through the, and they're available in the accountant's office. So there are a number of expenses here, and they're not wild, they're not from out-of-space, they are actual. And for this FY '18 budget, they've already been paid. So I'd like to go on, if I could, on staffing, and money. So for existing staff, health insurance is 3.5 percent increase this coming year. So that's in addition to the total insurances of 3.2 million. So the 3.5 is already set as a max, it could be less, final negotiations aren't done. So that would impact the FY '20 budget, the one we're talking about. The life insurance is a 38 percent increase for the school. The FY '20 increase in just school retirement assessments is 157,252 dollars. And while we don't have property liability insurance for FY '20 yet, workman's comp has increased by 25,000 for the school as of a month ago. All of these expenses count towards net school spending. When, whatever slide it's on in here, it shows Greenfield as the bottom of the barrel in net school spending. Let me just find that. Of the number of towns listed, of all these towns, four of them, only four of them, pay more than Greenfield. It's got it listed at the bottom, but in fact, the net school spending by these towns were above all of them except for four. I believe two of them are in financial trouble, they're spending more than they should, and the other two have enormous tax bases, Amherst and Northampton. So you can compare us and call us names, but Greenfield historically has provided enormous support, monetary, innovative, and staff from the city of Greenfield and the community for the education of our children for decades. The, go ahead, I think there's someone else, and I'll...
Sure.
Thank you.
Member Holland's.
Well, I was just going to say that there's so many parts to the school budget. As the Superintendent said, you know, you have all your grants, which you can use them for, all these specialty funds, which you can use them for. But if I were in the audience, what I would, what I think all of us can think about together is we're spending $4 million of tax money, of our tax money, on students that are deciding to go to charter schools or to other neighborhood schools. And as one of the parents who came said, you know, when you first moved to town, you didn't think much about Greenfield Schools. Really are pretty great schools here. And if there's anything we could do, one of the things we have to be thinking about is how do we bring back some of these students? That's $4 million. The business manager said we could educate those children, some of them, there'd almost be no additional cost if they would come back in, we'd just be saving. So I think it's something to think about. How do we certainly support choice for people that want choice, but also see if we can whittle that number down so that money could be used in our budget?
Steve?
Okay, I'd like, I think we've hit on a very important topic, and that's the city-side costs. We've been going around and around, throwing around numbers, no one sees, they just hear. I think it would be very important in future budget discussions to actually have those numbers in front of you so you can investigate them. In fact, 603 CMR-10 requires that, and I'll read this to you, that school and municipal officials must agree on the reporting, allocation, and documentation of expenditures by municipal agencies. We don't have an agreement in place between the city and the school on city-side costs. It's required. And I think we should work on that in order to everyone be on the same playing field. I know the city has no problem sharing that information, we have no problem sharing that information, but it's important that we have a written agreement in place in order to, everyone to speak the same language, everyone to know, and going forward, because it's hard to follow if it's not in front of you.
Thank you, Steve. I agree wholeheartedly.
I could move the envelope a little bit, if you want.
Pardon?
I could move the envelope a little bit, if you want. I'd like to talk about transportation. So...
Go for it.
We have a new contract with transportation. It's an annual increase of 95,000 that the school has. Is that correct?
That's accurate, yes.
Roughly. Does that include the two routes that have been brought up for discussion about being removed?
It was an increase and then a decrease. So it does not include the two additional routes.
But I thought we went out with an RFP, with the Council of Governments earlier would have included those routes when we did the RFP.
The RFP was five communities, which include us, Gilmonagu, Union 28. And basically, what we gave them, the information on our routes, on our total routes, which included those two routes, but then they aggregated everybody else's route to come up with a blended rate, a blended standard rate for the 40-plus routes that was bid. So yes, it includes, but what we gained with that is the economy of scale of the 40 routes.
But we bid with those routes in.
We bid with those routes in, but the pricing is based upon every single district's route.
It's a price per route? Is the way to...
And then other districts' routes were included in the cost for our route?
The cost for all the routes is a blended rate, so we gain that economy of scale, basically awarding the contract to a bunch of people rather than just the eight bus routes here in Greenfield.
Think of it as Groupon.
And then if we decide to not run those routes, we would get the full benefit of not paying for those routes.
I didn't know that. I guess one of my questions is, we have IDEA, the transportation line item that I'd mentioned in a couple other meetings. It shows $400,000 in it, and there's 2,000 spent out of it. What's, how is it intended to be spent?
I'm sorry, the...
How do we intend to spend that $400,000?
For, I thought you said DEA, I don't know what...
IDEA?
Oh, IDEA, gotcha. Okay, IDEA is a grant, which is going to pay for transportation, as well as a few other things. As our billing catches up, we will go ahead and expend that money. Right now, we spend approximately $650,000 to transport 30 kids.
Do we have any funds allocated already for transportation?
Yes, there's some funds in the regular budget also for that.
So will we then have more money dedicated to transportation than we can spend?
More money, oh, is there going to be a surplus in that line?
Yes.
Maybe a little, but not much.
So if there's no savings in the new contract, so the new contract has been, we agreed with the new contract and voted it, I believe, a month ago. So if there's no savings in that, and at that time, we requested that you speak with the contractees or contractors to see if we could negotiate downward because of our particular flat land instead of the high land, and the convenience of our routes and streets. Is there, has there been any result from your discussions?
Two, okay, I think we're conflating two things here. One is special ed transportation, and one is regular ed transportation. We did go out and bid our regular ed transportation, big yellow bus routes. That price did go up. However, it's gone up mostly because finding commercial drivers, CDL drivers, is very difficult. I wouldn't suggest that we get in the business of CDL drivers and the big yellow buses, because Cosmesis does it much more efficiently. What is not efficient is special ed transportation. Special ed transportation, again, for one student to go from Greenfield to Holyoke is about $48,000 a year. I can lease a Mercedes-Benz and drive that kid from here to Holyoke every single day. So the point is, is that I did talk to a few folks regarding special ed out-of-district transportation. They are unable to do it as cheaply as we could do it ourselves. Right now, we have three vans sitting in our lot doing nothing. We need to find 70 drivers, we need to find 70 drivers, and pay them enough money to run that route. Then I can transport at least four or five kids, saving that $48,000 a pop, by the cost of one driver at 15, 16, 17 dollars an hour, 18 dollars an hour, one monitor at about 12, 13 dollars an hour, reap the benefit of that other, say, five, four or five, at $48,000. And then I can sell off space to Gilmonagu, Turner's Falls, and if I charge them around 25 or 30, they're getting a bargain. So this is a moneymaker going forward. Within the budget, there is about a $200,000 cut in the special ed transportation just for that. But it's getting off the ground, it's brand-new, this is outside-of-the-box thinking, is it going to be perfect? No. But it's one way that we can save money and really charge other people for what we do.
Right, and I agree, I think it makes a common sense idea to be doing that. We had a study four years ago that suggested just that. And we also had other options for transportation that would save money. So it's too bad that we're doing it next year. I do want to say that that F-19 SPECT grant has $475,000 budgeted for transportation that has not been touched. It'll be carried forward if it's not used. So is there a plan for that 475,000?
It will be used.
But we already have funding for our transportation costs.
We have partial funding, but in this year's budget, that 475 goes towards the total budget funding for that line item.
And then we discussed earlier the pothole money. Are we going to use that this year? That's $103,000. That has to be spent this year. Is that going to result in a surplus in the F-19 budget because it wasn't planned? Or is it going to be just built in to increase costs in the F-19 budget?
I think you said it perfectly, it was planned to be used.
Okay.
Member Holland's?
Well, I think everybody gets a sense of what our Budget Subcommittee meetings are like. It's a lot of detail.
like, it's a lot, a lot of detail, you need a lot of coffee, but what I'd like to say is I think we have a deadline of tonight to come up with a number that we give the mayor, and I think we have to give that to him tomorrow. We have three more months to look at priorities. Today at our subcommittee meeting, we agreed to put the revolving funds on a subcommittee agenda. It's complicated, because if we spend them all down, you're going to go back to the situation here in 2008 where there's no backup, people that have been here for a long time, their heads are nodding. So we have to carefully look at each of these funds, see if there's more money. In addition, we generally, the school system habit for years is to try and prepay summer tuitions, and that has something to do with how money is managed during the year, and some extra funds that might be at the city side, which is about $200,000, and you always have staff turnover, I don't know how many people turn over, but there's always turnover, and that frees up a little money. So I, I would like us to try to get to a vote on a number, and maybe it needs to be a series of votes, because I think the, as someone mentioned, we don't decide how many teacher aides there are. We, we do more policy, philosophy, so we can say, you know, these would be our priorities as a school committee. So I'd like to try and help move us toward a vote, and maybe it should be in segments.
There's a motion on the table.
There is a motion on the table?
There is absolutely a motion on the table, that's how we started our deliberation. The motion is to support approving FY '20 budget for a total local value of $19,970,347. I'm seeing Member Ward.
I'm not sure if it's part of the motion or not, but the, there was also discussion at that time about the, the buses, the fourth grade teacher, the kindergarten, and including those things. Was that a part of the motion?
It wasn't part of the motion, but there was discussion on it.
So the motion was, we want to support the superintendent's budget at 20 million bucks, and add those, at least those other things.
So you bring up a good point.
Right, so before.
So, but wait, it's not part of the motion, though, just FY '20?
Correct, correct, I understand that. And, but, that was, that, that's what we're talking about here, is, is we want to get a number, and then, and it sounds like while we put the number out there of supporting what the superintendent has, that's not enough, and this is where we're at. It, it is a brutal, brutal game. And you've got some of the best people at the table here. They, they care about your education, but they also care about your, your, your town roads, and your police department, there's a lot of, there's a lot of moving parts here. And the budget, the school budget is very, very complicated. I don't even know how complicated. I have a, I not only have kids in the school system, I have a granddaughter, and that's my fear, is that I don't want to leave this thing and have us doing something that the bottom falls out of in, in five years, okay? So, it's pretty important that while I support everything that we've said here, I, Karen Patnott was, maybe not what she said, but how she, how she, how she delivered it, was, was powerful for me. I do want to give the teachers everything that they, they need to, to do, to do the job as well as we want them to do the job, but the, I also don't want that increase to be so large in a short period of time that we can't continue to keep up with it over a longer period of time, because I'm not just playing, I'm not just here for the next couple of years, I'm here for the long haul, I love Greenfield, and I, anyway, I don't know what the number is that I could support, because there are, there's a lot of unknowns, and. I think that I'm just going to leave it at that, but the, the, the important thing is that we've, that the motion on the table does not include adding the buses, and adding that, and I, for everybody that's here that spoke, you're going to, we're going to find a way to do that. If you're sitting here wondering, geez, I wonder if they're going, that's going to happen, I can promise you that. I don't know how, but we've heard you, and that, that's incredibly important. I hope that you'll all consider running for school committee at the, at the end of this year, or whenever the time, because that's what we need, we need that kind of input on a, on a very regular basis, because you, you do get heard.
Thank you, Member Ward. I saw Member Karen, and then I'd actually like the superintendent to speak to any thoughts that you have related to funding the, keeping the bus routes and the fourth grade teacher. So first, Member Karen.
I just had a, I know, our policy says we would like to keep 2 million in revolving funds, is that the, about that? So it looks to me that we're projecting a possible overage there of 2.4 million, 473,000, possible, depending on, apparently I need to start wearing glasses, don't tell anybody else. So at, taking 200,000 from revolving funds would not force us towards a fiscal cliff?
It would be, no, using 800 would, 200 is, is safer, yes.
So we could possibly add to our budget 200,000 from revolving to think about those bus routes, like we've talked about, we don't get to decide what that money's officially used for, we just help get the budget where it needs to be, and then taking actual tax dollars, for lack of a better word, to pay for the other things we would like to do.
That would be a plan to do it, yes.
Okay, and then, I also really love that everybody's here, but I just want to remind you to go to town council meetings, too. Because we give this number, and then they get to decide what to do with it, so just keep coming, keep going, we hear you, they need to hear you, too. That's all.
Thanks, Member Karen. Superintendent, would you like to speak to any ideas for funding the two bus routes and fourth grade teacher?
I'll start with the fourth grade teacher, so I, I want to talk a little bit, there was a question earlier, and this is answering your, your question, but by way of explanation. There's a question earlier about where these cuts came from, and I want to say that the school department is a little bit operating in the, in the dark when we don't have a clear target from the committee, and we're, we're constantly told to be responsive to the taxpayer, but also to advocate for our students, that we can't keep adding, we have to cut, we have to find efficiencies, but it's, it's challenging to do that without a bottom line at all, it's also challenging to do that when the range of opinions has been so diverse as this committee has presented this year. And so the rationale has been to protect the heart of teaching, which has been classroom teachers, power professionals, the staff that we have, the support services, and to add on mental health and supports for our students. And any perceived inequity in how that comes across is because we're, we're looking to try to preserve key instructional supports, and, and teachers, and classroom supports. Having said that, people have, have really clearly said, these other things that are considered, you know, outside of, you know, the core, is really important to me for a number of reasons. If I can't get my child to school, it's really hard to access that wonderful classroom teacher. If I need to drop them off a little earlier, and not having before-school care means I have to go to work and I don't have anybody to watch them, and they can't get them on their own, that makes it hard to access their teacher. And if there's a large class size in kindergarten, or no fourth grade teacher, and people can't choice in, or the word gets out that we're limiting our enrollment, that makes it hard. So I'd want to say these things are related. I think that in specific, we have a, a policy as far as choice funds, and the mayor and the Budget and Finance Subcommittee discussed this earlier today, we have, I think maybe it's a prior vote of the committee, that we can't add a teacher for the purpose of allowing choice in. So if we had two full classrooms at Four Corners School, and it worked out perfectly such that there were no more children, the two kindergarten classes were full, and, and that was the extent, we would not be allowed, consistent with our prior vote, to add a, another teacher using school choice funds, and then to open up seats for school choice, so we would have a whole classroom full of school choice children coming from other districts. But I don't think that's likely to be the case in this situation. It's early, we're going to continue enrolling, this is March, we have all the way through the summer, we have a big enrollment influx always over the summer, we've had a successful kindergarten registration at all three elementary schools, we had a number of families already register at Four Corners School, we know there's interest there. I think what we have are enough Greenfield residents to open up a third kindergarten at Four Corners School. I think we could use school choice funds to do that in this coming year, and I think probably you'll also have a few seats open after Greenfield residents are in that kindergarten, that would allow us to take in some choice in dollars. I think that's a good business investment, I also think it's just good for our families and our children, and I think it promotes growth in the district long-term. As far as the bus routes, we've heard pretty unanimously across the district that folks rely on those routes. The reason that they're, that they were not cut sooner is that even though they're within the radius for walk distance, there are specific safety issues with those routes, and the policy allows the superintendent to make exceptions to that radius based on safety considerations, including lack of crosswalks, lack of signage, any number of things, lack of sidewalks at all, and Health and Safety reviewed those routes, just looking at photos of that, and it was really clear, the day after it snowed, that if you were a child walking down a number of those roads, there's no sidewalks at all, and many of them, they're just not cleared, and it, it would not be a safe situation. So I would recommend that we find a way to do that. I think the innovative approaches that we've found to cutting costs in transportation are the right way to keep our dollars in the classroom and not on buses, but to keep those routes, and keep those children who depend on that transportation to get to school coming to school. So yes, I think we need to keep that in the budget through a combination of revolving accounts. And I just want to speak to before-school care, we've heard, again, pretty unanimously from families, that this is something that they value in the Greenfield public schools, this is one of the reasons that they see value here in Greenfield that might not exist in other districts. I also hear the committee talking extensively about where do we find savings? I think as a middle ground, we would like to bring back to the committee a very modest fee structure that's on a sliding scale, that would still be affordable to families, that makes before-school care possible, that covers the district costs so that the school district is not absorbing it, and then forced to make cuts or layoffs, but also does not eliminate that service. So I would like to recommend a sliding scale fee-based program that the committee would consider with rates, if you're interested in that, Steve and I will work to develop a rate similar to the Greenfield Recreation Program, or other fee-based programs that reflect families' ability to pay while still keeping that service available.
Thank you, thank you, Superintendent. Any other questions or comments? We, yes, Mayor Martin?
The, it's my interest, it's primarily focused on finding the liquid sums of money that are available in the school department at this time. So if, if there are several hundreds of thousands of dollars that can be verified and identified, then I think they should be used as part of this FY '20 budget. So I would like to offer a friendly amendment to apply $650,000 of existing revolving funds to the FY 2020 budget, reducing the budget to $19,320,347, and provide applicable policy modifications if necessary. That's a friendly amendment to the person who made the original motion.
That was me, and I do not accept that amendment. Okay, yes, Member Karen, did you have your hand up?
I was thinking about making a friendly amendment myself.
Okay.
But instead of the 600,000 that the mayor said, I think we should take 200,000 from revolving funds, still keeping us well within our 2 million goal, and still not needing to change any policies, and apply that to the final budget?
I just want to make sure I'm hearing you correctly, so right now with all of our estimates, we're looking at a budget grand total of $23,150,626, and what I hear you suggesting is that in addition to that, we spend an additional $200,000 out of revolving accounts to bring the grand total to $23,350,626?
Correct.
Okay. Yes, Member Hollins?
Just want to say that the revolving funds, it's a number of different specific funds, and the subcommittee voted unanimously to recommend 200,000 from the school choice revolving fund.
Okay, great. So in response to your amendment, so the answer is yes, I do support your friendly amendment, what I don't want to happen is for there to be confusion, because right now we're looking at the local budget with the plan of spending. You know, I think so.
Separate vote?
Yeah, I think it should be a separate vote. Okay, so we still have our same motion on the table with no changes, and then we just heard from Member Hollins, the subcommittee recommendation, that can be addressed momentarily. Is everybody ready to vote on the motion that's on the table? Kind of seeing some yeses. Could you read back the motion, Susan? Do you have a question?
To approve FY '20 budget with a total local budget of $19,970,347.
Thank you, Susan. And Member Karen has a question.
This is a clarifying question. If we were to decide on these other two things we've been deciding on, thinking, talking about, and adding money so that, hopes that those things can happen, would it be better to put them in our local budget, or to take them from revolving funds? Do you have an opinion, Steve?
Yeah, what I would do at this point is, since the Budget Subcommittee already approved that number, is to take that number, 200,000, to be applicable to busing, as well as the teacher, and the, what, the, the before-school care, I think.
Is that a sufficient amount?
It's close.
It's close.
I mean, it can be never a sufficient amount.
More general. Okay, so before we vote, I just want to, I want to clarify, I do think it's a good idea to also articulate our interest in spending from the revolving accounts and looking at the budget grand total. My understanding is that some of this, it's difficult at this time because some of these are our estimates. So we will, of course, revisit this, as has been mentioned multiple times today. So I'm, I'm really looking for guidance related to any additional motions that we should be making related to the spending of offsets. I guess I'm kind of looking to Steve and the superintendent in terms of, you know, fulfilling our responsibility and what is best for supporting the conversation moving forward into the next couple of months. Does that make sense?
Makes sense.
So, right now, we're about to vote on the local budget, and then there's interest in sort of clarifying offset spending. Is that the best way to go moving forward tonight?
I'd like to make one note, it's not anything that the committee needs to take action on, but I want to make a note before you vote on the local budget. And I think folks understand, there's the local budget, and then there's some additional revenue, and together that's called the all-funds budget. And so when we talk about the local budget, it's not to say that that's it, it excludes anything else, there's these revolving funds that we've been talking about all night, but they're part of what we plan for and spend, so it's not a slush fund that just sits there or waits for a rainy day, and we're drawing from these accounts, and we plan to spend however much we take in each year, we plan to spend that same amount the next year or that year. So there, these accounts are being spent down. So I do want to say that. So I do want to say that this budget considers utilizing the Special Education Stabilization Fund that's been established by the city and has a placeholder. And the committee would need to recommend to the mayor to put in front of the council a request to access, I believe the amount we've identified for this budget is $150,000 from the Special Education Stabilization. And that's because our out-of-district costs have gone up by well above that amount, in excess of $200,000. Probably it'll be higher because some of those are still unknown at this point. But if that action weren't taken by the committee, the mayor, and the council, we would be coming back and saying, there's a shortfall somewhere else, because this budget is built with the assumption that we'll access $150,000 from Special Education Stabilization due to rising Special Education costs.
Thank you. I appreciate that reminder and just clearly articulating that. Okay, so we've got the motion on the table for the local budget, and then we will look for some motions supporting our offset spending and a motion to support the Special Education Stabilization Account Request, I think, to kind of bring us to what's right here in front of us. Does that cover everything? Okay. Okay, so motion on the table. Are we all clear on the motion that's on the table? Give me some nods. Everyone looks kind of good. Are you good? Okay. All... Sure.
Thank you.
Secretary Ekstrom, if you could help us with that?
Mayor Martin? Member Hollins?
No.
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 So you're abstaining? Member Nunes?
Yes.
Member Karen?
Yes.
Member Alexander?
Yes.
Member Ward?
Yes.
And Member Ekstrom is also a yes.
Member Hollins? Okay, so the motion passes. Thank you, everybody. Okay, so now to address what the superintendent just reminded us of is, yes.
I'd like to move to instruct the superintendent to provide funding for two busing routes indicated to be eliminated with and from the IDEA grant account.
This doesn't make sense, right?
Superintendent said no. I didn't know she was voting.
No, I just asked her if that made sense. I mean, it's not a Special Education bus route.
IDEA is Transportation Account.
But in general, I support your sentiment to come from some revolving accounts. I don't know, maybe it's easier to be general.
Well, we don't have to be specific with the account, so I withdraw that phrase.
Okay. Susan, could you repeat back the motion without the phrase related to the IDEA grant?
To instruct the superintendent to provide funding for the two busing routes indicated to be eliminated.
Would you accept?
Yes, that's perfect.
Is there a second?
Second?
Second, my member Karen. Would you accept a friendly amendment to include via revolving accounts?
Sure. School choice revolving? Is that what you're...
I mean...
Can we just say revolving?
Yeah. I think, isn't it acceptable to be general in case there's something that we're not thinking of right in this moment?
Sure.
Okay.
Revolving, any revolving account.
Revolving accounts. Okay. Thank you. Any deliberation on that? Okay. Susan, could you read us the motion, and then we'll vote?
To instruct the superintendent to provide funding for two busing routes indicated to be eliminated via any revolving account.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? An aye, okay. Okay, I believe that was all ayes. Was there any abstention? Okay, and there were no nos, right? Yeah, Cam, what's up?
What, I do respect Susan, Member Hollins, mentioning that we're not specifying the account. When does that, when does that get determined? Who determines that, and how does that go about? Because my understanding is that when you're playing with the revolving accounts, it's kind of particular which one you're playing with and how you go about that.
Yes, Member Ward, they all have different sort of restrictions, and the choice account is definitely the most flexible account that we have. And my understanding is that this will circle back to us after the next couple of phases of the budget conversation, at which point, my expectation would be that the superintendent would come to us with a plan for the spending, and we would say yes or no to it at that point. But I mean, at this point, we're essentially giving the yes to like whatever plan she devises to be responsible spending out of those accounts. Okay, yes.
I voted no because it didn't designate an account.
Wow, thank you so much for that clarification. I thought the vote was a yes vote. Okay.
Designated a revolving account.
So, did we have six yeses and one no's on that? One no on that? Okay, thank you, Susan. I saw a hand over here, Member Karen.
I'd like to move that the superintendent, also from revolving funds, fund the third kindergarten classroom. I don't love using revolving funds for that, but...
Okay.
Sorry, I'll say it again. I'd like to move that the superintendent fund the third kindergarten classroom at Four Corners using revolving funds.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, my member Ward. Okay, did you want to speak to your motion?
I think that it's really important that we have that third classroom because getting, as we've heard time and time again, and witnessed time and time again, school choice in is our way to keep money coming in. And when we lose families at that point, it's not a great choice. I don't love that it has to come from revolving funds. We shouldn't fund steady positions from ever-changing accounts, but it needs to happen. So if this is how it has to happen, this is how it has to happen.
I have a clarifying question, just kind of for you and also for the superintendent. My understanding is that this would then allow for the additional fourth-grade teacher to sort of tackles that, and is the language of the motion supporting that goal, which is to not cap kindergarten enrollment? Okay. I saw a hand over here. Member Hollins?
I support adding the position and finding the money. But to talk about spending down your funds that keep the district financially stable without being careful is not wise. And what it's going to mean, if we don't keep enough money, that each year, we can have the same amount of funds, it means you're going to start cutting staff. It's not a wise idea. So the subcommittee said it would go through each revolving fund to see if in that category we had extra money we could use. But there isn't a lot of extra money if you want to keep stability, which is why... So I just think to say, we're going to spend from these revolving funds, we're spending down our stability, and that isn't good for the school district. But I don't disagree with adding the position.
Thank you, Member Hollins. According to my estimates, this is actually very close to the $200,000 that was recommended out of subcommittee to be spent out of choice, in addition to what is already being planned to be spent. So I actually feel really comfortable with putting forward these motions today. And I agree that if I didn't have an understanding of what those costs may be, and I didn't feel confident in those estimates, then I think that it would be essentially voting without, you know, without the information that we need to vote. But right now, I feel comfortable supporting it because I feel like we do have a good idea of how much this would cost. I saw a hand, Superintendent.
Two comments on that. I appreciate this vote because it allows the district to take action now to plan for that third section. Families need to know now. They want to make plans. And it helps the building principal to begin to staff that, begin hiring, and so forth. I will add that there's the potential, though we can't guarantee it at this point, that we could find grant funds to cover that. We do apply and seek out class-size reduction teacher grants each year, although in any given year, whether that's available depends on our enrollment, other needs, and so forth. So I might suggest that you phrase it in a slightly broader way, which is revolving or grants, in other words, non-local funds. So we won't be adding to the base of the budget to fund this, but we would find a way to fund it. And then the second thing I just want to say is, it is the job of the administration to bring forward solutions that meet the policies and the bottom-line budget that this committee has voted. So when you ask about whose job is it to fulfill the votes of the committee, it is the job of the administration. So it is not actually necessary to go through with a fine-tooth comb the revolving accounts and identify areas. That actually is why we have a superintendent and a business manager and a team of administrators and department heads that know their budgets, because Ed Reform says that site-based management is the responsibility of those administrators in charge of their budget in their schools. That is the process and the accounting practice that we follow.
Yeah, I do appreciate the flexibility there. The budget is an ever-changing document. It's kind of alive sometimes. And with the kindergarten, fourth-grade situation, you know, tomorrow, we could have four teachers retire, and that would be a savings of probably $70,000, $80,000 right there. So we may never even need to tap into that. But the fact is, is that there does need to be flexibility, and I appreciate that.
So should I amend the motion to say that the superintendent worked to find funds to fund that position using grants revolving funds? Or surpluses from other areas?
Okay, and the second came from Cam, right? Did you, does that work for you? Okay. Okay, so that's the motion on the table. Any additional questions, comments? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that was unanimous.
I'm sure.
Yes.
I'd like to move that we instruct the superintendent to provide before-care programs at all schools utilizing funds from grants, revolving funds, or any other funding source.
Second, my member Ekstrom. Yes, Member Karen?
I just have a quick question.
Yep.
Totally support this, but the superintendent earlier had mentioned possibly finding ways to fund that using sliding scale or other options. Should we, can we, do we hold on that, or can we include that in the motion?
I think it's included in the motion in any other funding source. Was that your intent? Okay. Super. Any further conversation on this?
Just for Member Karen, I think the superintendent would come before the committee before she implemented such a program.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Yes, I'm sorry. Yes. Are you voting?
The motion reads before-care programs at all schools.
I appreciate you clarifying that. Mayor Martin, was that your intent, or were you attempting to...
I did mean elementary schools.
Okay. And that works for you, right?
It does.
I think the intent here is really to be focusing on, you know, what we've been talking about, the before-care programs that we've been discussing at Newton and Four Corners, right?
Federal Street.
And federal, okay.
Because the Newton's start time is quite early, so it's not... I could be wrong, Mel, because it's a large of an issue.
I'm seeing Member Hollins.
We understand that if there isn't a demand for this at a school, we wouldn't open the program if there was no one requesting it, right?
Thank you. Okay, are we set? That was unanimous, right? It was unanimous, yes. Everybody was an aye? Great. This is great. This feels nice. I think there's one last thing that, well, two things are on my mind. One is the Sped Stabilization Account, and another is addressing conversation around Chapter 70. But I'll move now to request that the mayor present to council a request for utilizing $150,000 of the Sped Stabilization funding to partially address out-of-district increases for FY '20.
Seconded.
It's pretty straightforward. I think it's part of the budget proposal that we have here, and this motion needs to be made in order to request the mayor to move forward with that. So that's my intent behind it, yes. Out-of-district Special Education expenses. Yes, thank you for clarifying. The Special Education Stabilization Account is specific to special education. Any additional conversation? Yes, Mayor Martin?
The, I understand the motion to request the mayor to ask the council to take $150,000 from the Special Ed revolving stabilization account?
Yes.
So I would ask, what is the balance of the stabilization account? Tuition stabilization? We have one balance of $550,000 and another balance in another account of special ed stabilization for the school department. What are those balances now?
I believe this is the special account set up by the city.
Yes.
In order to...
That has $162,000 in it.
So that would be the balance.
Right, but you also, the school department has their own special ed account.
They have a special tuition account, yes.
And the balance of that?
That is...
Are you talking about the current balance or the projected year start, or...
I can give you a projected ending balance for the end of the year of about $208. I don't have the exact balance right now.
So would it be, it wouldn't be Title I, right?
No.
That has a multi-balance. Would only be Sped Stabilization? I don't know why that's... So you've got that set up already in your budget?
No, that's a, that's a city Sped Stabilization. That's yours.
Right, but you've got it in the offset.
That's correct, and hence the motion.
Okay. Okay, so I'm, I understand there's $575,000 in the Sped Tuition revolving account.
That's expenses. The end balance is $208.
Yeah, we... We'll need to apply expenses out of that that haven't been applied yet, yes.
It hasn't been applied?
Not yet, no. We're only about halfway through the year, so rather than front-load those offset expenses, we back-load those offset expenses.
Right, but the obvious transfer would be that you've been using it to pay people out of the operating account, and once you reimburse those funds into those accounts, then the operating account has that money because it's already been spent. So when you reimburse your operating account, you're going to end up with the money you haven't spent yet.
Can I jump in here? Mayor, the column you're reading with $574,120, that's the expenses, not the balance. That's this year's estimated expenses. The, is that what you're looking at, Mayor? And the ending balance at the end of next year is $44,000. So we have been steadily depleting this account, and it opened with a balance of $186,000 was prior-year revenue from last year. The beginning balance was $600,000 roughly at the beginning of FY '19. The FY '20 estimated ending balance in this account is $44,741. So the reason we're...
So the reason we're applying an offset of one hundred and fifty thousand dollars from special education stabilization is precisely the reason we've been talking about all evening, which is we are spending down every revolving fund that we have, whether we're doing it in one year or two years, all of these accounts are being depleted over time, they're not sustainable sources, and in this area in particular, this volatility in special education is the reason that in 2008, there was extraordinary turmoil in this district, and the reason that we're trying to be extremely prudent in, in budgeting and projecting these expenses out, and in fact, the reason that the city is to be commended for creating a special education stabilization account for when those out-of-district costs go up unpredictably by thirty percent in a given placement in a given year. We're talking about a, a situation where one student can cost two hundred to four hundred thousand dollars per year. And because our costs have gone up again this year by at least two hundred thousand dollars, but probably likely more, as I've said, we're looking to apply a very modest amount of that stabilization account towards that and leave as much as possible in the city stabilization account.
Which was about one hundred and sixty-two thousand.
So is there an annual revenue for that account?
For?
Annual revenue for the special ed tuition account. What is the annual revenue?
The annual revenue for the special ed tuition account is about one hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars per year.
Thank you.
Yes, member Hollins?
We had a parent who spoke, Matthew Barrett, I wrote. And we had a parent who came to a subcommittee meeting, and I think they both said the same thing. I, in the budget of the three elementary schools, only one, Four Corners, has a position that under the description says library slash reading. And I think the parent tonight said, you know, there's a disparity in the schools because Four Corners has someone on staff that's in the library. I don't think it's a librarian, I think it's a teacher that does reading, and there's computers. But at one time, there was someone at least three-fifths time in all three of the libraries overseeing the computers, helping students during reading groups. But it is true that we only have one school that has that position listed, and the parent who came to the subcommittee meeting said, you know, it looks like Four Corners gets differential treatment because they get somebody staffed in their library, and the other two libraries have to relate to volunteers. I actually think this is a important need in the schools.
Did you want to speak to the motion?
I'm sorry, I thought we voted.
Okay, so there's a motion on the table to request the mayor to present to council a request for utilizing one hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the city's special education stabilization fund. Any additional questions or comments related to that motion? Okay? All those in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, did you have a question?
Yeah, can, what was it?
Susan, can you read back the exact language?
To request that the mayor present to council a request for utilizing one hundred and fifty thousand dollars of special education stabilization funding to partially address projected increases in out-of-district tuition for FY '20.
Thank you, sorry.
Oh, no problem. Okay, yeah, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 No.
Mayor Martin's a no, and all those no's? Any no's?
I'll abstain, because I think you need to do that at the end of the year when you know you need it.
Thank you. So the motion passes. Member Hollins, did you have something else on a different topic?
Sorry, I'm feeling well, but I, I think the issue of having, I don't think parents should think that we favor one school over another, and we should try to have equitable staffing, and because we actually have posted our budget, and two people have mentioned, you know, how come Four Corners has something called library slash reading intervention as the other schools don't? I think we should take that up at some time. How do we get someone in each elementary school library where there are banks of computers and books coming in and out and having reading groups? I don't know the solution, but I don't think it's good for parents to think we favor one school over another.
Superintendent?
The solution is adding staff in our libraries.
Okay, thank you, Superintendent. Okay, so we're coming to a conclusion here. I do want to throw out one, one, one last, one last motion for us to consider. I think that with the Chapter 70 funding that we are anticipated to receive, I would really like to see this money in the classroom. I know that this money can be utilized to be spent to support some city-side costs. I, I know that. There are some restrictions related to that, but very few. And I know that, that's part of the work that's being done at the state level, is to support communities related to healthcare costs and retirement costs and et cetera, et cetera, that are all part of what it costs to educate students today. However, with this an additional one point one million dollars that we anticipate, I think that right now at this time, we need to see this in the classroom, and we need to see this support the operational budget here for the schools. So I move to utilize the full amount of the state aid for education in the form of Chapter 70 funding with a current projected increase of one point one million dollars to fund the school's operational budget.
Seconded.
You know, I actually want to, I want to clarify, just in case there's any confusion, because I think I sort of didn't state that very clearly, but my intent here is really that this additional funding, this increase, be spent in the classroom. So I guess that would be that to utilize the full amount of the state aid increase. Member Ward?
Okay, this, this is where I'll probably put, I, I won't support this.
Okay.
Just because I think that it's the full amount, and I don't think that that's fair. And while we have supported the full amount of the superintendent's budget, and, and we've advocated for more, I do think that we need, as our business manager has pointed out, a real, a closer look at the city side of the budget, or, or the city, cities' costs to providing a, a, an education that we can all be proud of. And we have to consider that Chapter 70, I know, I know that there's, you know, that that needs to be used for educational purposes, but there's, there's a bigger picture here that I think that we really need to, to take into consideration.
Does anyone know if debt exclusion is, or debt servicing on a loan for the high school, for example, is considered eligible for Chapter 70 expenses?
I do not know the answer to that. I don't believe so, but I.
Is debt servicing on loans for school buildings eligible for Chapter 70 funding?
Good question.
No, because debt is generally done by a levy within and of itself, so.
Is debt servicing included in the total education cost, Mayor?
In the, yes, particularly net school spending.
My understanding also is that with Chapter 70 funding, the healthcare costs for retired employees is also not able to be funded through Chapter 70, and that's another, you know, it's another real cost that we have that's factored into our overall spending.
And I think, if I may, I think the chart is pretty, pretty direct on who presents financial orders to the council, and the school committee has no authority over the mayor to compel or order or direct the mayor to present financial orders to the council. So it's purely advisory. The, the revenue from the state is under the total control of the mayor. The Chapter 70 funds are revenue from the state. You can't, the school committee or any other committee or council can encumber future revenues into the city of Greenfield. So I can't support this motion.
Thank you, Mayor. Do you have your hand up?
Everything I read about how you make sure your school system can thrive in cities talks about building a close relationship with the city, kind of mutual respect about, we each, the city and the school department each has a finance committee, and I think we should be meeting together and negotiating, you know, even four times a year. But I think it's incumbent upon us to at least recognize that there's a city side to the city, I mean, the city budget that also struggles. Last year, other departments in the city were decreased so that the school committee could have more money. So I just think it sends the wrong message to not acknowledge that there's costs on the city side that are going up that relate to education.
Yes, member Karen?
I just want to ask a clarifying question. So basically, what the mayor just said is that by passing this motion, we're just making a value statement that he can do whatever he would like to do. But also by passing this motion, we are in theory asking the superintendent to use more revolving funds to meet the budget we set earlier? No.
Um, not necessarily, but possibly, because the budget is, is taking into account an additional one point one million dollars coming in from state aid that would be going directly into the classroom. That's what this budget is looking, looking to do.
I agree that the city costs are more than people realize, and I did look at the increase. It's approximately, I can't remember now.
Six eighty.
Six, six point eight percent. I really want it to go to the classroom. I really think that that's how we continue to grow our revenue in town, is by continuing to make our schools a place people want to be at. But I could also possibly be support of maybe splitting that increase, so that we only decrease our budget by approximately one hundred and ninety-two thousand. That simple increase that's listed there, about a three hundred and eighty-four thousand, which would still keep us above where we would like to be for, or at our revolving funds stable, but I could go either way. I don't want to, I don't want to, like you said, it's a value statement, so my value is classrooms, but for mutual respect.
Um, yes, Superintendent?
So I'd like to clarify. Mayor, is the, the increase in estimated city costs from five point seven million to six point one million roughly, the three hundred and eighty-four thousand, i- is that accurate?
Your starting numbers are incorrect. So you said five point six to six point?
Five point, it's on your handout, and they're not my numbers. I understand they were provided by the city to our business manager, but the five point seven million is the FY '19, six point one two five is FY '20 total estimated city costs for six, six point seven percent increase that member Karen was referencing, three hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars is the projected city-side increase.
So I understand you had provided some details on the last page.
I'm looking at the last page of this handout that we went through this evening.
Actually, can I speak to that?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I wasn't, those numbers, the last numbers I was able to get were FY '18 from the end-of-the-year report, so this kind of just extrapolated out to give you kind of an idea of what, because a lot of questions were surrounding, what does the city pay? Those were the best numbers I could get, but I do look forward to sitting down with the city in order to try and reconcile those numbers.
But to, to answer the Superintendent, I could go through that list if you wanted to.
Okay, so I guess I might suggest that maybe it's premature to make a recommendation on the division of the Chapter 70. It's certainly plausible that the city side will experience contractual increases and intractable cost increases that contribute to education, and that the school side will experience similar increases that contribute to education. I think it's hard to say what that breakdown looks like without looking at the itemized detailed list of city-side expenses and projected increases. We've set, spent six months or so on that process on the school side, and to, to look at that, I think we could come up with a really fair way. If this money is coming to Greenfield, however you look at it, it's a win for Greenfield. If it goes to the school-side budget, it's a win for the schools. If it goes to the town-side budget, that frees up dollars that can come to the departments and the schools. So this is revenue that's coming to Greenfield, it's a good thing for Greenfield. Of course, we want to see those dollars used for impact to students, and that's what the school department does with its, its funds. We, we make that a priority all the time. But I think if we could have that itemized, and I think this committee requested that information, and the Budget and Finance Committee also requested that information, I, I am still looking forward to that information following today's meeting. That isn't something that I have received, so I'd be looking for that to make a, to, to come to some meaningful agreement or have a, have a thoughtful discussion on.
Okay, so there's a motion on the table. Could you read it back to us?
To utilize the full amount of state aid for education in the form of Chapter 70 funding, currently projected increase at one point one million dollars to fund the school's operational budget.
Thank you. So I still stand behind this motion, and the reason is because, in part, what the Superintendent, Superintendent noted, that, you know, this is, this is money coming to the city to support education, and right now, it's factored into our budget, and if it doesn't, you know, if we, if it doesn't land in our classrooms in our budget, then we are going to feel that as taxpayers elsewhere. And so, you know, I, I am looking at these estimates, which I believe to be, you know, really best, you know, best estimates that we can provide for these costs moving forward, and I'm seeing that there will be increases, and I want to just validate that, like that, that is real. I also believe that our community, our community can afford it. So, so yeah, that's, that's my feeling on it, and I want to see these dollars in the classroom. So the motion is, yes, member Hans?
Would you consider a friendly amendment to reword it so that we could all vote for it?
What's your amendment?
Something like to, first, it's advisory, because we don't receive the money, to appeal to the city to allow as much of the new education funding as possible to come to the school district budget to help stabilize the budget for the future, or something like that. Not to interfere with your motion, but.
Can you read that back, Susan?
To appeal to the city to allow as much of the new education funding as possible to come to the school district budget.
Yeah, no, thank you, though. I appreciate that. Okay, so there's a motion on the table. Can you just read it back real quick?
To utilize the full amount of state aid for education in the form of Chapter 70 funding, currently projected increase at one point one million dollars to fund the school's operational budget.
I'm sure.
Yes, Mayor Martin?
There's another scenario that could be developed, and that is what if the, instead of getting one point one million, we get three, three point one million?
Mm-hmm.
And so, the, all of the Chapter 70 money plus the town's contribution would be more than your budget. What would happen then?
I think I'd be pretty excited.
You could spend it. So often in these conversations about spending money, there's always, and I mentioned it today, there's always an empty chair. There's one there. And that empty chair is the taxpayer. They never get involved at this depth, at discussion of their money. So I think, I think that's why we have a government, is to have the process pretty much public, transparent, and, and regulated, rather than having different people from, people from different places trying to divvy up newfound, windfall, windfall-type cash. So that's, again, why I can't support this motion.
Thank you, Mayor Martin. We are all taxpayers, and we are all members of government, and we do also hear from our constituents. Okay, there's a motion on the table. Not sure if it has the support it needs, but it is what it is. All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed?
No.
Three no's, and any abstentions?
Abstain.
Two abstentions.
No, I'm aye.
You're a yes, so that was two yeses, three noes. Three noes and two abstentions. Does that make sense? Did I get that right? Okay, great, super. So the motion fails. Thank you. I appreciate the conversation, though, and it sounds like we are all in support of as much money as possible going to support our schools. Any further motions, deliberation? I just want to ask very clearly again, do we need a vote on our projected revolving spending at this point?
I would say no, and the reason is, is because the revolve, offset spending.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, overall offset spending.
And if we lock into a number now, those numbers could significantly change with grants, money coming in, different dollars coming in for revolving accounts. So I think the bottom line right now, the bottom line, local appropriation is sufficient.
And did I see a hand over here? Member Hollins?
I was just going to say, I think it's going to be on an upcoming agenda for the subcommittee to go through each one of these different accounts and look at whether that the money in any one of those can be freed up.
Okay, so I believe that concludes our deliberation on the FY '20 budget. Congratulations, everybody. Let's pat ourselves on the back. There's still more work to be done, and I will echo what Member Karen requested from the public. Additional support as we move through the process would be great. So there is one more item on the agenda. You want to take a break?
And first grade. Kindergarten and first grade. I had her for both years.
So, Member Ekstrom's requesting a quick break, and I'm cool with that, too. So let's take a five-minute recess, and then we can come back to our final agenda item. So let's be back here at 8:40.
Hi, everyone, we're back.
So we do have, hi, everyone, we're back. I think that we may have, that Member Alexander may have left, but I'm not sure. Okay. We do still have a quorum. We have one agenda item left. This is an open meeting law complaint. I'll just give a quick intro, which is that I filed as an individual an open meeting law complaint related to the budget subcommittee. I believe that members have a copy of the complaint. It's also my understanding that the complaint was reviewed at the subcommittee level earlier today. I did also speak with the Office of Open Government and the Ethics Commission related to how to handle this complaint. And my understanding is that the complaint can be reviewed by the subcommittee and just be handled there. It could also come to the full committee. The example that was given to me when a full committee would weigh in on a subcommittee-related complaint would be if a subcommittee has dissolved, or it's not like an ongoing subcommittee. And then I spoke with the Ethics Commission as to my participation in the conversation. I had that conversation today, very late in the day. And their recommendation to me was that if I felt that I could be, not be biased, I could participate in the conversation, and that the best recommendation would be to file, I believe it's a 23B, I could have that incorrect, but to file that with a clerk to ensure that I would be able to speak to the issue if I wanted to, and make sure that there was a formal filing of that documentation with the clerk. So given the timing of that, I didn't really have time to do it. So I'm happy to abstain from the conversation and just leave the room and let the committee decide what they want to do. I believe that the subcommittee has something, and I'm seeing Member Hollins raise her hand.
I called the Attorney General's office today to find out what body should respond. I had a return call at 4:07, and I read the line of the complaint where it says name of the public body. And I read that the complaint is filed, the public body is the Budget Subcommittee, comma, Greenfield School Committee, comma, Greenfield, Mass. And the Attorney General's office said, "We would say the subcommittee needs to file a response, since that is the body the complaint is filed against."
Thank you, Member Hollins. And that was my original intent, was, you know, to file related to the actions of the Budget Subcommittee. So, yes, go ahead.
Do you want any feedback about the complaint?
Well, I guess, you know, my, initially, instinct was to just kind of leave the room and let you all.
I don't think you should.
But if you don't, okay. So if that's the case, then I'm happy to stay, and I guess, I don't know, hear input or whatever, it sounds like the subcommittee discussed this and potentially put together. Do you?
Madam Chair, we can, I can't get my gyro to work, so I'm dealing with it on short and small font. But this is the response from the members of the Budget Subcommittee, to include Chair Cameron Ward, Dr. Susan Hollins, and myself, Mayor Martin. At its meeting of Thursday, March 7, 2019, the Budget and Finance Subcommittee of the Greenfield School Committee met. As part of its agenda, the open meeting law complaint was reviewed sentence by sentence. The OML complaint was filed by Adrian Nunez as an individual using her personal Gmail. Then, as chairperson of the Greenfield School Committee, Nunez forwarded her complaint to school committee members and advised she would make her personal complaint an agenda item on March 7, 2019. Date of the meeting that is basis of the OML complaint is January 22, 2019. The public body is the Subcommittee of the whole Greenfield School Committee, known as the Budget and Finance Subcommittee. The date of filing was February 22, 2019. The necessary days to file such an OML complaint is 30 days. Date of required response is 14 working days from February 22. Statement A. The Budget Subcommittee of the Greenfield School Committee deliberated on topics that were not clearly posted on the school committee agenda. The response, "We disagree. The complaint is untruthful and inaccurate. All discussions were part of the 2020 budget agenda item." Also, the posted January 22, 2019 agenda concludes with, quote, "The public body may consider and take action on unforeseen matters not specifically named in this notice," unquote. Statement B. The agenda listed the following items as the only main topic for the meeting. 2020 budget meeting with Greenfield and GMS, I'm sorry, Greenfield High School and Greenfield Middle School principals and activities accounts leaders, athletics. Response, "Agree." Statement C. The draft minutes note that the administrators meant to meet with the group were on, were not present, available, and the topic was passed on. Response, "Incorrect. There were two sets of draft minutes. Only one said that the topic was passed over." The minute made from the tape. The second draft set of minutes does not say topic was passed on. In fact, the business manager said he had the information, and these topics could be discussed. At the business manager's request, the Subcommittee talked about other 2020 topics first. Transcript excerpts from the January 22, 19 meeting tape posted online. Chairperson. So we're going to go now to the next topic on the agenda. The 2020 budget meeting with the high school and middle school principals, activities leaders such as athletics. I'm told they're at faculty meetings, but we do have a, Member Hollins. Do we have a copy of the budget, maybe, that has high school business manager? Yeah, yeah, I can go make copies. I have some other things to talk about with the 2020 budget first. So you want to hit those first, and then I can make copies of the budget. Chairperson. Great, great. I know the middle school and high school issued written requests. Member Hollins. Form ones. Chairperson. Form ones, is that what they are called? Member Hollins. I don't know if these are the final ones, but we had some last meeting. Business manager. They were from the last time. Actually, I have a summary of all the form ones here. Chairperson. Beautiful. Business manager. So we can discuss these as far as that pertains to the proposed middle, high, and all that type of good stuff. And then I also have a list of the expense lines by category, and we could go talk about those, too. Statement D. According to the draft minutes, the group that went on to discuss transportation, transportation contract, middle school, elementary, high school, central office, and district-wide requests despite these items not being on the agenda and representatives from those departments, schools not being present, this is a clear violation of the open meeting law so alleged. Response, "Not true. The business manager asked if transportation and the transportation bid could be discussed first, since the bids had just come in. This is not a violation of open meeting law, since it was an unforeseen topic, and the posting allows for this. Talking about the 2020 budget was posted on the agenda." Statement E. I do not believe this to be an intentional violation of the part of Chairperson Ward. It is my understanding that he may not have had a clear understanding of the OML at the time of the meeting. However, the group consists of senior members of the committee that have all been exposed to and reminded of OML on multiple occasions. Response, "To insinuate that committee members are doing business behind closed doors is a gross insinuation of the hard work of the Budget Subcommittee. Complainant Adrian Nunez requested the Budget Subcommittee Chairperson cancel the meeting, but with budget timeliness, he did not cancel. Everyone on the Subcommittee is trained in OML. At times, committee members clearly different AG guidelines. Only two members of the Greenfield School Committee have extensive public budgeting experience, and both are on the Budget Subcommittee. There is concern about intimidation and bullying being made as target of those members, often identifying errors or omissions." Complainant action request, "I would like the Subcommittee to publicly recognize the offense and commit to future compliance with OML. I would also like an apology to the public for not informing them of the topics to be deliberated. Apology to the other members of the school committee for deliberating on topics without their advanced knowledge. An apology to the administrators, department leadership that was not aware of these topics being discussed, and therefore were not able to attend nor speak of their requests." Response, "The Subcommittee would like the Chairperson of the school committee to publicly apologize for error and for the complaint. The Subcommittee would like to know the Chairperson's motives for this complaint. If the meetings are posted..." "If the meetings are posted, how could the administrators not know their school budget could be discussed? On behalf of the Budget and Finance Subcommittee of the Greenfield School Committee, this response will be signed by the Chair, Cameron Ward, Member Dr. Susan Hollins, and Member Mayor William Martin." That concludes our response.
Yes, Superintendent.
I have a couple of clarifying questions and comments. The first is today, the Budget and Finance Subcommittee did indeed meet, and this was on the agenda. It was discussed line by line, and the three members of Budget Finance Subcommittee did talk about a response. I'm holding my notes from this morning, and they differ from the response that you just read. I think the mayor read out the proposed response, and the point-by-point itemization was different than how you've read it. So, for example, on the item, the agenda listed the following item as the main topic, 2020 budget and the activities and account leaders. The committee's response at the time of the meeting today was "Agree." The next was, "The draft minutes note that the administrators meant to meet with the group were not present or available at the time the topic was passed on." The group's response was "Agree." The third one was that, according to the draft minutes, they went on to discuss transportation, so on. The mayor's read this already, so I don't want to belabor the point. And the response to that was "Deny," and the next one was, again, "Deny." My point being, I guess I'm confused, because when did this response get drafted? How did it change from today? Can you please clarify? Currently, the minutes of our meeting from this morning are posted, they're online, so this is not, we post all meeting, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to say minutes. The recording is online from today's meeting, as it always is. But I'm a little confused how it changed.
You were at the meeting, so you understand that both Cameron and I mentioned to Susan Hollins to put the composition of the conversation to a response for tonight's evening. She brought that with her this evening, and I read it from, she didn't actually bring it, so I had to get it emailed, and that's what I just read.
Was it sent to anyone else?
Cam and I.
So it was sent to the members of the Subcommittee?
Yes. We are the responsible party for the response.
Right, but when did it change?
As a draft.
From what was voted or discussed today in Subcommittee?
Well, I wrote it from my notes, and it was listed as a draft, because I thought there would need to be something tonight. I didn't know the tape was posted, and I'll go look at the tape, because it's just a draft.
I'd also like to comment on the section that has to do with personnel. I advised the Subcommittee this morning, I think the intent of this is to respond to an open meeting law violation, but there are some related issues here. I feel it's my duty to again advise the committee that when we're talking about personnel, who did or did not attend, who did or did not know, I want to advise you to be extremely careful, because you're making public statements about people's job performance, which may or may not be accurate, their knowledge about something which you may or may not be aware of, conversations between the Chair of the Subcommittee and the Superintendent, and contractual issues. So I'm concerned about sort of inadvertently stepping over into items that will bring some difficulty for the committee.
And I'm concerned that, you're concerned, there was no names mentioned in the meetings this morning and this afternoon, and there was no mention in the response this evening. So is there, secondly, this is our response. Are you suggesting we change our response to meet some particular law that you would like to point out at this time? And would you identify any personnel that you think we are offending by reporting public minutes and public information?
I think the list of staff that may be offended by this conversation is longer. I'm going to pull up a screenshot of the posting. I believe that the posting specifically names three administrators. The middle school principal, the high school principal, and the athletics director for the district. In addition, the Superintendent was not present at the meeting that you're discussing. The response that you've just read, I believe, stated, "How could administrators not know that it was posted, given that it was posted?" I don't believe that's at all relevant to what's stated here. The open meeting law violation has very little to do with whether or not administrators knew there was a meeting. I think the statement about the open meeting law has to do with, I'm reading, representatives from these departments/schools were not present, and that was known to the Chair at the time of the meeting, because there were faculty meetings that day and other school-related issues with those three people attending the meeting. So I'm just, I'm...
Let me clarify for you. In the complaint by the Chairwoman, it's indicated that the minutes discussed, transportation, transportation contract, middle school, elementary, high school, central office, and district-wide requests despite these items not being on the agenda. Our response included what was on the agenda, which was the GHS and the GMS principals and whatever else I just read that I don't have.
Okay, in response to your question, I had the request that you strike a comment about what administrators knew or did not know, because I don't think this committee can know that information, and I think it's totally irrelevant. I do have one other comment.
Let me just interject, because the response read this evening was much more brief than the conversation we had at the meeting today. So we withdrew the particular, particular story of why no one showed up at the 5:30, 6 o'clock meeting. So at your request...
I'd like to make one other comment, which is regarding the minutes. The response that you're... The response that you're, you have just read out talks about only one version of the draft minutes, states something, and I think it's probably most salient to comment on the minutes at the time that they were posted when this complaint was filed. The minutes have since been modified from that meeting but are still in draft form, and it's a kind of peculiar situation where there are two sets of minutes for the same meeting by vote of this Subcommittee compiled together in a way that is not typical. And so, there are two sets of minutes sort of cobbled together in one set of minute, which have not yet been voted in. So, the response addresses that, but that wasn't the case at the time of this particular filing, as I understand it.
So, there, we have a open meeting law complaint. Part of the law is to respond in 14 days. You're talking about minutes? So, how is it relevant to our open meeting law response and following the alleged violation?
The response that you've just read states, only one set of minutes, such and such, I think. I've only heard what you've just read just now, so I'm going off my memory of what you said three minutes ago. But I'm simply stating that it would be helpful for the record if it clarified what was publicly available at the time the open meeting law violation was filed, and what is currently available, because those are two different things. So, what was publicly available on February 22nd was one set of draft minutes, which stated, this item was passed over because the personnel were not present. That was on our website, and that was publicly available. And there is a different set of draft minutes available now because of action from the, of the committee between that time. That's all. It's just a note for the record.
I'd have to review, I'd have to review that, because on February 22nd, we had already had a follow-up meeting with the Budget Committee, and we had decided that we had two sets of January 22nd minutes.
That's right.
And I suggested.
We met that day at town hall for two or three hours prior to this meeting that night, but the committee voted that day to ask the Superintendent, to ask a staff member to compile those minutes, which I did when I arrived back to central office after the meeting here that night, which means it didn't happen until a couple of days later when that staff member.
So, how is that relevant to the open meeting law?
So, okay, hold on a second. I'm, hold on a second. This is, this is a little awkward for me. I just want to, again, state for the record that I'm sitting here because committee members requested that I stay here and sit here. What I want to clarify, what I'm hearing is that there is a draft response to the open meeting law complaint coming from the Subcommittee. We heard the mayor read it, and most of us are hearing this for the first time. I also heard that the draft was sent via email to the Budget Subcommittee. I don't know when. Sometime today. And that the Budget Subcommittee has not deliberated an open session on the draft response beyond what was discussed earlier today, the draft response that was emailed to them. And what I, I see your hand, Member Hollins. What I, what I want to clarify, so I heard from Mayor Martin just prior to the meeting saying, "We discussed this at Subcommittee, and I didn't realize that the Subcommittee could also respond." So, there are a couple of things that I want to know about what we should be doing tonight. Is there a request from the Subcommittee to have the full committee review the response, or is there any action from the full committee that's being requested right now? And I guess I'm asking Member Ward, as Chairperson of the Subcommittee, is there any action of the full committee that's being requested right now?
I don't believe so. We're here to address the open meeting law complaint. It's my understanding that the complaint is addressed to us, to our Subcommittee. So, we, our response is to go to the Attorney General. And that is, that is the impression that I'm under. We're, we're here to, to give you the draft response that came from our meeting today. We need to, clearly, we need to review it and, and be sure that it's something that we want to send in to the Attorney General. I want to continue, and I wanted to say how disappointed I am that we're even here doing this. I'm embarrassed. Okay? You know why there's two sets of minutes? Because we're acting like children. It's dysfunctional. I'm ashamed. Okay? I'm most disappointed that you, Chair, talked to I don't know how many people about the complaint, the Ethics Commission, the Board of Government, you named several people, about filing the complaint. You never talked to me about it until it was filed. This is something I think that we could have taken care of without such drama. And quite honestly, that's what makes me wonder, what's going on here? But I think that that's about it. I don't want to, you know, I don't want to get into particulars that deal with staff members and other nonsense.
Thank you.
I think that this is embarrassing enough. Quite honestly, I, I'd like it to, to end, and I think that we've got to, our Subcommittee needs to maybe deliberate on the, on the draft response that we have put together for, for the Attorney General, and then we'll, we'll submit it by the timeframe that's required.
So, Madam Chair?
Yes.
So, the, the response to the Attorney General is tomorrow. And if there are problems with the response, then we'll hear back from the Attorney General or from the Superintendent or from you. So, we can, we'll be following the law on that.
Yes, I look forward to further reviewing the response, because it's, you know, the first time I've heard it. I just want to say that I don't have any shame about this. I think that it's really important for us to look at these mistakes clearly. I also want to clarify that I spoke today with the Ethics Commission about my involvement, specifically because, you know, one member questioned whether or not I should be even participating in this, and I felt like, absolutely, I should find out what is, what should I be doing in terms of participating in the conversation. And they're here to serve us and to help us through these technicalities as well. I spoke with the Office of Open Government, in part, to help better understand the process, because this is the first time I filed a complaint. So, I appreciate hearing the draft today, and I'll look forward to reviewing. Member Hollins.
Well, I'd like to comment. I, I feel it's very awkward for you to file a complaint, not as a Chairperson, but as an individual, which is your right, just as I could file one, and then to chair the me, and then to put it on the agenda where we had specific, specifically voted items we wanted on the agenda. We voted that at the last meeting, topics we'd agreed, but then to use your.
That's not true.
We did, we voted, not this, but we voted to talk about whether we would.
At future meetings.
Yeah, right. So, what I'm saying is, it feels very uncomfortable to me that you'd file a complaint, and then in your Chairperson role, put the complaint on the agenda, and then moderate the meeting. There's two kinds of ethics from my training. One is a clear conflict of interest, and the other's a perception, and it just feels very awkward. And the other comment that I made at today's meeting, which I'll share, is I think members of this committee are treated differently, and that isn't healthy. And I'll leave it at that, but I think there's a clear distinction about how people are treated. And there, it does feel like the people that have the background in budget, that look at it and read it and talk about it, somehow are targeted as being, you know, a detriment to the school district, when in fact, I don't think the people, I think the people that have the experience feel like they're spending hours trying to figure out what's happening in order to help the district. So, I think we should all be treated equally. And, you know, any of us at public meeting, I could get up and go out and do a three-minute, any of us could, leave the committee and go out and be an individual, then come back. It's just very awkward. And what bothered me most, I think, wasn't the complaint, but that you also judged that it was true without a review, you know, saying, you need to apologize for this, apologize for that. We, no one thought that anybody had violated open meeting law.
Thank you, Member Hollins. I think the lesson for me is to, in the future, leave the room, even though my membership requested that I stay here tonight. And I look forward to, yes.
It was my understanding that the mayor asked you to respond to.
Yes, yes. There are so many things that I feel a little frustrated about in regards to this. There's name-calling, calling me a bully. There's a story about me asking to cancel the meeting, which, to my recollection, is actually not the case. I had a conversation with the Budget Chairperson about feedback that I had received, and I believe that I specifically stated, I would want to review it, but I believe that I specifically stated, hey, you know, you're the Chairperson, I'm not going to tell you what to do, but you need to hear this feedback. And then the other thing that I do want to say is that I added it to the agenda specifically because the mayor said, hey, it needs to go to the full committee, and given the timing, I threw it on this agenda, and I did that as a responsibility to the group. And at the start of this session, I specifically said, the Ethics Commission requested, or said that it's, I should either be filing the 23B form, or, you know, I can stay, or I can go. And I was about to leave the meeting, and my membership requested that I stay. So, with all of that being said, I agree with you, Member Hollins, it is awkward. And so, so there it is. I'll just look forward to reading the response, and then we'll go from there. So, that's that. I do not believe we have any executive session items today. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Moved by Member Karen Second and by Member Hollins. Great, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
All of our productions at GCTV are sponsored in part by Bay State Health, providing the care you and your family need when you need it close to home. Visit them online at baystatehealth.org. Greenfield Savings Bank. Visit them at 400 Main Street in Greenfield. Call them at 774-3191, or go online to greenfieldsavings.com. Greenfield Community College, providing access and excellence in higher education in the Pioneer Valley. Visit them at gcc.mass.edu. The Hammond Family. The Hammond Family are longtime supporters of Greenfield Community Television. New Fortune Chinese Restaurant on the Mohawk Trail in Greenfield. Visit them online at newfortunema.com. Call them at 772-0838, and check them out on Facebook. Real Cleaning Services, cleaning Hampshire and Franklin County since 1972. We don't cut corners, we clean them. Check them out online at realclean.com. Call them at 413-422-1143. Peoples United Bank, located at 45 Federal Street in Greenfield. You can call them at 774-3713, or visit them online at peoples.com. The Solar Store of Greenfield, replacing fossil fuels and nuclear power one home at a time. Visit them at 23-Fisk Ave. Call them at 413-772-3122, or visit them online at solastoreofgreenfield.com. Thank you to our sponsors for supporting all of GCTV's productions.